Good afternoon. The May 4th, 2021 virtual meeting of the Anarongo County Council is now in session. This afternoon, we will hear from various departments regarding the proposed FY22 budget. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey's not here yet. Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Bowler, our county auditor.
Present.
Madam Chair, as predicted, we have six council members and our county auditor present.
I like it when our predictions come true. Thank you, Ms. Corby. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We pray to administer that which is just in all policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting and broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. This technology also satisfies the intent of the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to meetings and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held."
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, we will begin today's presentations with the Spending Affordability Committee. All presenters, please remember to introduce yourself and to continue to identify yourself before speaking each time. So, Madam Secretary, let me know when you've brought forward everyone we're supposed to bring forward.
So, we have Mr. James here with us on behalf of the Spending Affordability Committee.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mr. James. Thank you for coming to present to us today at the floor.
My pleasure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hey, fantastic. Okay, apologies for the confusion on presentation times from Friday. We're supposed to present on Friday but had a couple of conflicting times of when that was supposed to occur. So, I'm happy that we could reschedule this for today. Again, my name is David James. I'm the Spending Affordability Committee member from Council District 7. And it's my fourth year presenting to the council as the Chair of the Spending Affordability Committee. I'll start with the bottom line here. In our January report, the committee recommended an increase of 2% to the fiscal '22 general fund budget as compared to fiscal '21. This equates to an appropriation limit of $1,714 million and change, approximately a $34 million increase versus the previous year. The recommendation, as always, was based on data that we had available at the time and assumes a fund balance of approximately $38 million for fiscal or from fiscal '21. The other thing I'd note about our recommendation is that it reflects a unanimous consensus of the seven committee members. As we do every year, we go through a consensus process to arrive at the number that we're recommending. We get everybody's input and then to work to consensus. And at the end, the 2% number was agreed to by all seven committee members. So, I will give you a little bit of detail to explain the rationale for our decision. I'm going to focus on three areas. The first is the impact of federal spending on the county economy overall and revenues, especially over the past year. The second thing is going to address, the second point is going to address the uncertainty associated with budgeting decisions based on personal income projections. And then finally, I'll talk a little bit about the growth of county spending versus personal income over the last 10 years. So, the first point, federal spending. So, one of the counterintuitive outcomes from 2020, calendar year 2020, was that the county income tax revenues exceeded expectations despite the fact that COVID-19 obviously had an impact on jobs and businesses with about 1,000 net jobs overall lost in the county during the pandemic and some other sectors within the county hit even harder. About 4,500 jobs lost in hospitality, restaurants, and the like. So, despite that, like I said, county income tax revenues went, were higher than expected. So, the analysis of this shows that's primarily, if not entirely, due to federal spending. While personal income data isn't available at the county level, we do have it at the state level. So, we can look at what happened there to have some insight into why our income tax revenues and personal income were the way they were. The data at the state level shows that employment, investment, and business income all dropped in 2020 due to the economic effects of COVID-19. However, there's one other component to personal income, and that's called transfer payments. And that component increased by more than 75%. This by itself resulted in an overall net increase at the state level to personal income versus the previous years. So, transfer payments include, amongst other things, taxable unemployment benefits. Okay? So, when you look at the data at that level, what you see is the enhanced unemployment provisions included in the CARES Act at the federal level contributed significantly to personal income and more specifically, the 2020 income tax revenues at the state level and at the county. The other point I'd make about the CARES Act concerns a point that we've made in several of our reports to the council over the past few years. The degree to which the county economy is driven by federal spending primarily at Fort Meade. So, the committee has made this point repeatedly, as I said, that upwards of 30% of the jobs in the county are directly tied to federal spending, and that's either direct government employees or contractors, government contractors, working for private businesses. The majority of these jobs are international security-related and therefore were protected under the CARES Act. So, they're considered essential functions, and those people continue to work and draw a paycheck and obviously contribute it to our income tax base. For all these reasons, Anarongo Fair is better economically during COVID than many other municipalities in the state and the country as a whole. The benefits we receive from this federal spending, of course, are a good thing. So, I want to, you know, not, or underscore why I'm bringing this up. So, it's great that we have this to buoy the economy in times like we've seen over the last year. However, there's cautionary notes to this analysis as well. And specifically, as we noted in our report, we believe the county should be cautious about budgeting in the future, counting on the possibility of continued round stimulus. You know, obviously, that's a, was a lot of talk about that going forward, but it's not going to go forever. And then we also reiterate our recommendation that economic development policy should be pursued to make sure that we protect all those jobs at Fort Meade from moving to another state in future years. So, again, it's been a great thing getting us through the pandemic, but a, an area that requires continued focus going forward. Second point I'd like to make is regarding personal income projections. As we've discussed in, in our report every year, we look at personal income data to help provide decision support when recommending spending levels for the county. So, the county contracts with the Regional Economic Studies Institute at Towson to provide economic analysis and to project personal income. Their number in the report that they presented to us was 4.2% for fiscal '22. That was what their computer model predicted personal income growth would be. And historically, we use a number like that to inform budgeting decisions. However, we're in, you know, somewhat unprecedented times here, and there's a lot of uncertainty. And based on that, the council, or rather, the committee, I'm sorry, has concerns about the accuracy of that 4.2% projection for fiscal '22. And in fact, during their testimony to the committee in December, the briefer from Towson stated, and paraphrasing pretty accurately here, that he had low confidence in the fiscal '22 projection that they presented to us and that he would not recommend using any number higher than 3% for budgeting decisions. So, that was, that's what we were told. For the members of the committee, this confirmed what we suspected. Just because a computer model's predicting 4.2% growth, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to happen. Okay? And in fact, over the last several years, and we've noted this in our reports, analysis shows that personal income projections generated by these computer models are consistently higher than what we see happen in actuality. And what we tend not to do, or we haven't, at least historically, is really gone and dug into past actual results to see, did the models and the predictions match what actually happens? So, there's many potential reasons for this. I can go into a length if anybody's interested. But the point is, we got to be careful about looking at these computer projections. We also need to be careful about looking at the data in any single year in isolation. So, just because we, for example, have a prediction that says personal income is going to grow 4.2%, and we budget less than that number, we can't say, hey, okay, so we're good, right? We need to go back and look when actual data is available, which by the way, won't be for a couple of years, that we get actual results on personal income growth to see what actually happened. So, bottom line, we shouldn't conclude our budget is good because it's in line with projected personal income growth. We need to use some judgment here. It's a decision tool, not only. Last two years are a case in point. In fiscal '20, the council enacted a budget increase that outpaced projected personal income growth. Okay? And there's reasons that the council had for doing that. Conversely, in fiscal '21, the opposite was true. The budget growth was less than personal income growth projections. Neither of those decisions was wrong or incorrect. And again, mainly, to my point, the personal income projections are simply one decision tool. And of course, it's the council's prerogative to determine the appropriate spending levels. So, similarly, the Spending Affordability Committee takes that data as an input and then puts our judgment as to how that might inform budget decisions at the county level. So, that brings me to the last point, growth in county spending over the past 10 years. Because of the uncertainties in these personal income projections and because it is worthwhile to go back and compare them to what actually happened, a couple of years ago, the committee started looking at compound annual growth rate of spending versus personal income over the long term, not just for any individual year, because that could lead to false conclusions. So, this analysis shows that the actual personal income growth over the last 10 years had a compound annual growth rate of 3.5%, whereas county spending, the budget, general fund budget, had a compound annual growth rate of 4.25%. Okay? So, 0.75% higher than personal income growth. Okay? So, what does this mean? Simply put, spending has outpaced growth over the last 10 years. So, consistent with our charter, which is to recommend spending levels based on the quotability of the taxpayers to finance that spending, what we see over the last 10 years is that the burden placed on taxpayers has steadily increased slowly. Now, it's crept up over time, but it has increased over the last 10 years. So, this analysis that I just went through, it's detailed in the report, along with continued uncertainty over the long-term economic impacts of COVID-19. Those are the primary reasons for our 2% recommendation that we had in our report. As we have said in past years, the other part of the thought process here is that if the council budgets conservatively and revenues then exceed expectations, as appears to be the case this year, then you have the flexibility in future years to make decisions freely based on the fund balance and the like without locking the county into long-term spending commitments. So, that was the other part of the thought process in recommending 2% versus a higher number, more in line with the RESI recommendation. So, that's a high-level summary of the report that we presented. And with that, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. We'll take questions from the council. Ms. Pickard, I think I saw your hand flush.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. Thank you for being with us, Mr. James. I know you sent us your analysis from the Spending Affordability Committee back in January, February timeframe. I know the, I know we've, the, we've seen revisions in revenue estimates change at the state and the county level since then. I'm curious, if y'all were doing this report now, or let's say April 1st, would your report change in any way? That's my first question. You're muted, sir.
Yeah, so I have looked at that data. So, we've gotten the latest input from the Budget Office. And we did not reconvene the committee to reassess it and come up with a new consensus opinion. I think it may have changed. What I would say is, I have no doubt that based on what we're looking at in terms of revenue data, that if you budget a higher number than we're recommending, I'm sure you'll have a budget that closes. I don't have any doubt about that, and I have a lot of confidence in the revenue estimates that come out of the Budget Office. What I would say, though, is it's a little bit two separate questions. Do the revenues support additional spending? I would say the answer is probably yes. Okay? But back to the charter of the Spending Affordability Committee, is that additional spending placing a long-term burden on the taxpayers in the county? That's a separate question. Does that make sense?
Certainly. And Madam Chair, if I may, can I ask you one more question? Thank you. This is Allison Pickard again, too. You talked about how you arrived at the 2%. I'm curious, one of the reasons we do have the fund balanced is because this council adopted a budget last year that did draw down revenue expectations quite considerably and with the fear of revenue loss from jobs and whatnot. So, you know, we budgeted very conservatively last year, and we ended up, what, 40 million ahead in tax revenue from different sources, which is very interesting. I just wanted to make sure that, didn't know if the Spending Affordability Committee took that into consideration, not just federal stimulus and whatnot.
I thought you, yeah, no, we saw that. The Budget Office gave us that data and broke down the fund balance. That's why I made it clear that our analysis was based on a fund balance. I think it was $38 million is what we were looking at in January. So, yeah, I think that underscores the recommendation that we're making. Based on that budget that you had for fiscal '21, revenue exceeded expectations, which is a great thing. And it gave the council options as far as budgeting going into fiscal '22, which we think is a good thing and in line with Spending Affordability Committee's recommendations. You know, again, what I'm trying to iterate here is, okay, we have the revenue that will support that spending. We have, including the fund balance that we are carrying over from last year. But if we look over the long term about how spending growth has compared to personal income growth with the county, again, the conclusion from that analysis, which is a different analysis, shows that spending is outpacing growth in the county.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Mr. James, thank you so much for that presentation. I followed up last year with you and had a discussion about how I kind of felt like we were throwing spaghetti at the wall to see what stuck, because nobody knew at that point what was ahead of us and what we were truly dealing with from an economic standpoint with the COVID scenario. We are obviously a year into this, and what I hear you saying is to be extremely cautious with regard to income tax revenue, because it's not reflective of necessarily job growth or personal growth within an industry, but more reflective of federal spending to support individuals during the crisis. And we don't know what that is going to look like moving forward and how long stimulus packages are going to continue to come out of Washington. Is that pretty accurate in summary?
Yep, that's exactly it. So, when we look at, so, yeah, so again, I think there's a direct correlation between the federal spending, the CARES Act, and specifically the unemployment benefits, but also to a lesser degree, the other parts of the CARES Act is the Payroll Protection Program and various grants and those sorts of things. Of course, all had a positive income on, positive impact on personal income for the county. When you look at the jobs data that RESI presented to us, what that shows is flat jobs growth in the county for the next five years or so. And this is actually, they've been showing this for a couple of years now. And when we look at the jobs loss during the pandemic, again, Anarongo Fair, you know, not as badly as some of the other parts of the state. But when we look at that, you see jobs lost in restaurants and salons and various hospitality industries and so forth. The input we got from Towson, when they presented to us in December, that it could be years before those jobs come back. So, they, again, are predicting at best, flat job growth over the next five years for the foreseeable future. So, that's one factor. And we go a little bit beyond the topics I covered in my briefing, but some of this is in the report. The other thing to look at is demographics of the county. So, our population growth has been slowing over recent years. So, I've been on this committee for five years now. And it used to be that we were looking at planning based on population growth in the county of about 0.75% per year. And now, that number is down around 0.5 is what's in the economic analysis. And I think the actual numbers are maybe even a little bit lower than that. So, so, population growth is slowing down, and that's going to have a slowing effect on personal income in the county. And the other factor to look at is the aging of the county population. So, we're getting more and more retirees in the county. And some of the projections you see from the Bureau and the like show that that number's going to increase dramatically over the next 10 years or so. So, that will probably also have a negative effect on personal income. So, you know, there's a bunch of uncertainties out there that factored into our recommendation in addition to the CARES Act stuff that you just mentioned.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. James, thank you so much for your hard work this year and all of the years. I wanted to touch a little bit on the structural deficit from last year and how that impacts your projections for growth or your recommendations for growth this year. If I read your report correctly, I am understanding that that 2% growth you are recommending for spending affordability is based on eliminating that structural deficit. So, you were looking at the recurring revenues from last year, you know, assuming we had no structural deficit. Is that correct?
We talked about the structural deficit from last year, but I'd say the 2% was more based on looking at projected personal income growth and the uncertainty surrounding that. So, we don't really look at it as, you know, revenues coming in versus spending going out basis. We look at it more in terms of how are the, how's the economy overall of the county faring? So, are the county citizens making more money, bringing in more money? And are they likely to continue doing so over the next several years or not? That's probably the bigger factor than looking at individual, you know, how much revenue is coming in and what's the fund balance going to be, or is there a structural deficit or not?
Okay, with that in mind and understanding kind of this cautious approach, do you have any thoughts about a budget this year that really hasn't? I mean, last year's structural deficit was just under 25 million, and this year it's just under 20. That's not a whole lot of movement. Does the Spending Affordability Committee have any thoughts on that?
So, I make sure I'm off mute here. We didn't look at that specifically, but if I can go off the cuff a little bit, I would say that that is part of our concern going forward. So, we had the increase in the income tax rate two years ago and to cover the budget for fiscal '20, right? And I remember being asked a question back then is, are we locked in forever to the enhanced income tax rate? And might we even be setting ourselves up for the need to do another one going forward? So, you know, I would say that would be a concern. And it plays into the last point that I made about looking at the long-term trends on this. So, in an individual year, if the council decides to enact a larger budget with a structural deficit that addresses priorities, whether they be in education or whatever it might be, then obviously, that's a decision that the council, you know, those are the kinds of things that are voted into office to make, right, those decisions? But you got to look at the big picture and say, okay, is that offset by lower than, rather, by more conservative budgeting in other years such that it evens out over the long term? So, that's really what we were looking at with the analysis on compound annual growth rate of personal income growth versus spending growth. Is it evening out over the long term? And what we're seeing with that analysis is, the answer is no, that... Am I still online, by the way? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can still hear you, but we can't see you.
All right. Yeah, my Zoom dropped. So, what we see is the answer is no, it's not moving, it's not evening out. The steadily, the budget is increasing faster than the wealth or the growth of the county economy.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. You know, with all the uncertainty last year with what COVID-19 was going to bring and our conservative estimates with tax revenue, we really ended up overachieving those estimates by $41 million, which, which, there were lots of factors involved in that just based on the job market here that our large federal employees and things like that with NSA and Fort Meade. But also, you talk about stimulus and unemployment benefits, but the governor, the governor deemed unemployment benefits non-taxable. So, we actually took a hit, a local hit, of about $13 or $14 million in tax revenue and still achieved that excess $41 million above our estimate. So, do you feel going forward that those unemployment benefits are going to still have an impact? I think, you know, we are well positioned in Anarongo County based on our job market, which is unique, not only in the state but in the country because of our large federal unemployment and other things. Did you factor that in at all? And we didn't get any tax revenue from unemployment benefits.
So, no, we didn't, we didn't look at it at the level you just described. So, we're maybe more at a macro level. And we did have a lot of discussion about, okay, what exactly was the benefits of the CARES Act on county revenues? We didn't try to go and, you know, do a line item by line item about, you know, where did it all come from? The other thing I would say is, when we saw the data from the Budget Office in November, I guess it was, you know, we were surprised when we saw that the revenue estimates were coming in higher than expected. And then when we saw the data just in the past week or two, I'd say I was even more surprised. So, so, no, the results that we have that led to the fund balance that we see now weren't part of our discussions back over the winter. As far as do I think that we're going to continue to take a hit in income tax base because of, you know, economic effects of COVID-19? a hit in income tax base because of, you know, economic effects of COVID-19? I think the county is pretty well positioned for it. I do think that. So again, it's for the reasons I stated and you just reiterated about all the federal jobs. So I think the county is pretty well positioned with regard to that. We're just reacting, I guess, to the data that we were seeing back over the winter. If that helps.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for Mr. James? Seeing none. Mr. James, thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us this afternoon. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from the Board of Education. Our presenters are Ms. Melissa Ellis, Dr. George Arlato, Alex Shknovich, Matt Stansky, and Lisa Seaman Crawford. And I believe we are beginning with Ms. Ellis. Good afternoon, Ms. Ellis. You have the floor and I would remind all presenters to please be sure you introduce yourself and then continue to identify yourself when you are speaking each time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lacy, Vice Chairman Raviyan, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity today to discuss the county executive's proposed fiscal year 22 budget and its impact on our school system. Considering the many challenges faced by our county in the past year, it is a relief that the county executive was able to propose a budget that recognizes many of the most compelling needs of our school system without the need to further increase taxes on hardworking residents of Anaroma County. I'm glad that this budget makes significant strides toward addressing the compensation issues that our employees have faced as a result of previous lean budgetary years. The inclusion of back steps this year puts us closer than ever before to making our teachers whole. And as more funding becomes restricted moving forward after the passage of the blueprint bill, correcting these back steps will be much more difficult to achieve in future budgets. We must eliminate the condition that compels many of our more experienced teachers to take their skills to other counties in order, in order to be compensated for their years of experience the way our newer teachers, their peers are. I am pleased at the inclusion of positions dedicated to mental health, both inside our school system and in the mobile crisis arena. This is such a critical need for so many residents. The county executives request also continues to address the needs of our students requiring special education and English language learners, both important needs for our school community. Thanks to this budget, the important capital projects addressing our aging schools and population growth will also move forward. I am hopeful you too will support the important priorities of our schools. And should you identify additional funding to supplement them, we welcome the support for the students of Anaroma County. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you today. We are ready and happy to work with you as we move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I believe Dr. Arlato is next. You're muted, sir.
My apologies. Never done that before. So thank you. Thank you all for, as always, inviting us in and taking the time to review the Board of Education's requested budget each and every year. Both the operating and the capital side, as Ms. Ellis referenced. As you have reviewed our budget and will continue to do so over the coming months, you'll see that the Board of Education's requested budget focused on several key areas, one being compensation, the technology needs of the school system as we are emerging from COVID. A continued focus on building out the staff at Crofton High School. As Ms. Ellis mentioned, the continued support of our students in the social emotional arena, that being counselors, PPW, school psychologists, and social workers, as well as a focus on class sizes. While we did not increase overall in our enrollment this year, we know that we will continue to grow in the future years. We had also began into the COVID pandemic with behind in class sizes. We had not been able to keep up with hiring teachers as needed. And so that is also class sizes and class size reduction was an area of focus of the Board of Education's requested budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex and he's going to walk you through a couple of the key lines on the budget before you. And then we're glad to take your questions. Thank you again.
Good afternoon, Alex Shknovich, Chief Operating Officer, and I'm joined this afternoon by Matt Stansky, our Director of Financial Operations, and Ms. Lisa Seaman Crawford, our Director of Facilities. As we have done in years past, we will first begin with a review and overview of the county executive, the administration's proposed and recommended operating budget. There is an exhibit that has been shared and will momentarily go up on the screen. We'll go through that as we have in prior years focusing on the revenue and expenditure side. And then my plan is that we would pause after our brief presentation for the operating budget, Madam Chair, and do a question and answer session focused on the operating budget. And then once you and your colleagues and Madam Auditor are satisfied that we've completed that, then we will switch gears and do the same thing with our capital budget, beginning with a brief presentation and then questions and answers. So if that's agreeable to you, Madam Chair, that's our strategy for this afternoon.
It is. Go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for putting the exhibit. This should have been shared with everyone by now. Kind of hot off the press. Remember, it was only late afternoon that the admin dropped their recommended budget in Friday. So we've been hurriedly putting this together. So as we have in prior years, we'll begin with an overview of the revenue in terms of year-over-year increase in unrestricted federal funding. We do not anticipate any increase, but you can see that it's really only two and three quarter million dollars out of a, out of a very large budget. On the state side, we anticipated having an unrestricted increase of about $840,000 and that is the revenue increase that the administration has acknowledged. That is a very low number. It is atypical from anything that either you or us expect. And that is largely because of two things. One, we did have an enrollment decline. Remember that transient or temporary downdrafted enrollment related to the pandemic and the students and families that made temporary options. Otherwise, the governor and the General Assembly essentially took advantage or account of that. And the other thing is a foreshadowing and then Ms. Ellis briefly touched upon this, but a foreshadowing of our future that over time with the passage of the blueprint and Kerwin funding, we will begin receiving less unrestricted funding from the state in the years going forward and more in the restricted category. As is typical with our county, because the amount of support we get from the federal government and the state is inversely proportionate to our wealth, relative wealth here in the county, we are expected and reliant more on our local county government for funding. The Board of Education had requested just under $69.9 million. The county executive budget has a little bit under $34.5 million in total revenue. And again, we're going to go through the expense side of it. This is simply the revenue. On the local and local is our interest income. It's our ability to collect fees from rentals, scrap metal sales, all the odds and ends and what we can find under the couch cushions. We knew we were going to have, much like the county, a negative. And again, that's almost, almost solely attributable to the interest income environment as Mr. Trumpbauer shared with you, the county is experiencing. Knowing that and without knowing that we would rather not need to take those cuts, $2.3 million, we knew that we had to over attain on our fund balance. So we traditionally have about a $13 million fund balance, but no, we had to offset that $2.3 million local cut. We've worked hard to set aside that additional $2.3 million and work with the county administration to demonstrate that so that we can have a balanced budget essentially in the local arena. So all in from unrestricted funds, as you can see, we asked for about $68.4 million and about $35.3 million of it is being recommended for funding again at the county executive's level. On the restricted side, the administration put forward a budget recommendation that matches the request put forward by the Board of Education. In the restricted grant arena, about $12.8 million. Again, that's acknowledged by the county administration. And restricted grants are state grants, federal grants, and other miscellaneous local grants. And then on our, in our health insurance fund, a little bit under a $1.6 million increase, partially tied to FTE increase and partially tied to premium collections, et cetera. So again, that is a match. At the bottom line, then, the Board of Education's request was about $82.8 million. The bottom line on the county executive's proposal is about $49.68 million. I will say that we have not, at this moment, before I leave my revenue remarks, we have not yet received the final budget numbers from the Maryland State Department of Education or the Department of Maryland's Department of Budget DNB. So when we get those, we will share those immediately, as we always have, with Mr. Trumpbauer's office and county budget and with the county Madam Auditor as well, so that we can sync those up. We don't anticipate a lot of movement, but sometimes there is and sometimes it's sort of intercategorical. So maybe the federal number would decline or a state number will increase. And again, we'll sort out all those mechanics working with the experts and Madam Monitor's office and the admin's budget office. Transitioning down to the more interesting side of this then will be on the expense expenditure side. In this current fiscal year, we went to mediation, arrived at a mediated settlement with our teacher unit PAC to implement a mid-year compensation increase that did exceed the total full year value of the revenue we had. Therefore, we, in FY '21, so there was a spillover of just under 3.1 million to be requested as part of the FY '22 budget. That is not recommended for funding. The Board of Ed will have to go into its HR line using turnover and, you know, we are experiencing more retirements than we normally have, et cetera. So we are going to have to find the funding resources to make up the other half of the $3.1 million. The Board of Education asked for an FY '22 step increase, that is for all units, for those eligible with all units, about $14.5 million. And again, that is recommended for funding by the county executive. The Board of Education requested a 1% COLA, 1.0% COLA. Again, this would be for all employees in all units with a cash value of about $7.5 million. And the county executive's budget provides funding of that $7.5 million. As you saw in Mr. Trumpbauer's presentation, the admin's budget overview Friday afternoon, that is under, under the 1.3 or 1.4% COLA bogey that I believe the county budget office was using in their figures. So that seems reasonable in line. I am going to slow down a little bit for the rest of the compensation analysis because it gets a little tricky and I'm going to sort of try to paint the picture, make sure we can all connect the dots. So the next line in the Board of Education's request is something called match experience credits to salary step. And this is applicable to our Unit 1 and Unit 2, which is our teacher unit, commonly known as PAC, and our administrative leadership unit, again, principals, APs, et cetera, Unit 2 for AEL. So we have a number of employees here in the school district through a variety of means and a variety of reasons do not have an experience credit on their annual HR statement that is in mathematical alignment with their salary step. And I'll give you a few examples. You know, we had employees come in from other districts in some of those lean years that voluntarily took step reductions and voluntarily came in at a lower step level than maybe their experience at that time, but they knowingly and willingly did that, right? They signed a contract with us anyway. We did a large scale restructuring and that was scale restructuring, which was mutually entered into and agreed to by both the bargaining units and us, caused some shifts. And then there's a host of other reasons, right? Folks left and came back. Folks went on sabbaticals, et cetera. So there's a myriad of reasons, but not accounting for how that happened, to bring everybody's experience credit back into alignment with the salary step history. Again, not accounting for how that occurred, has a cost of about $11.9 million. Again, that's only for Unit 1 and only for Unit 2. The methodology or the approach put forward by the county executive is a little bit different. And I will walk you through how that differs then for each of the bargaining units. So to begin with, the Board of Education had requested an FY 11, 12 catch-up step for our units 3 through 6. That's about 1.48 million and that is fully funded in the county executive's recommendation. Similarly, the Board of Education had asked for a catch-up step for the FY 12, 13 year and the FY 15, 16 year, again, for units 3, 4, 5, and 6. That had a value of $1.97 million. Again, that is not, those two are not recommended for funding. What is recommended for funding is the following. So to begin with, for our units, Unit 1, which is our PAC or teacher workforce, it would be full funding for their FY 12, 13 catch-up steps. And again, remember, the prior budgets had taken care of the bulk of their legacy catch-up steps. So the 12, 13 is one of the two remaining for our PAC unit. And that would be fully funded by the county executive's proposal as well as the FY 11, 12 catch-up step for Unit 2, which is the administrative unit. So those two combined have an expense value of about $3.3 million. And then going down, there's a mid-year implementation of a catch-up step for our teacher unit, which is their FY 15, 16 catch-up step, again, for Unit 1. This would be a mid-year implementation. And we have some individuals that are paid on a 26 pay cycle. So this would happen on after their 13th pay, i.e. their 14th. Now, we have some individuals that are paid on a 22 pay cycle. So this would be implementable on their 12th pay. And then we would have a mid-year catch-up step for our remaining units. That would be the FY 12, 13 catch-up steps for our units 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And that would have a value of $3.16 million. So that is the overview of the compensation increases. Going down then into the line items for our charter and contract schools, recall that we have four of those and their funding algorithm is prescriptive within the state's code. And essentially, they get a proportionate or pro-rata share increase of our funding. And their share would go up by $475,000. In prior years, you may recall, we had to account for enrollment increases as well as the per pupil allocations for the charter and contract youngsters. All four of our schools have now All four of our schools have now reached their enrollment cap. So there's no longer an enrollment component. So this is simply the rising tide rises all boats phenomenon for for their. Fees and costs equivalent to ours. The Board of Education had asked for a thousand dollars for to supplement their existing. Budget for awards and recognitions that has been recommended by the county executive. The board asked for two positions to support our Centers of Applied Technology North. One position for an aviation program and one for a barbering program. One of those two has been recommended for funding and that is for the barbering program. The Board of Education asked for sixty seven thousand dollars to supplement our existing community ambassador cohort. That has not been recommended for funding, but I know the superintendent has has outlined for our Board of Education and I believe. Has some additional information forthcoming regarding our community ambassador program as well. We had asked for a zero point five teacher specialist for computer science. That's to develop the. Curriculum and a resource material, the textbook vetting, et cetera, for computer science curriculum. That has not been recommended for funding. Our Crofton High School, as you know, today exists for our ninth and tenth year, tenth graders. They're already in the building. And we've had a build out. We know we're going to be bringing in the eleventh graders in the year ahead. That would require an additional twenty six point four positions. That's not all teachers, although it is a lot of teachers. Or mostly teachers, but there's also, you know, counselors, assistant principals, another custodian, another guidance, school counselor, as I said. So that has been fully funded for or fully recommended for funding. There will be a much smaller ask next year. For the twelfth grade when we bring in our last and final grade level there at Crofton High School, again, smaller than than this twenty six point four position ask. The next line item I will speak to, but then there's going to be a couple of them. So I will make sure that we're all on the same page with those. So we currently are required and we do have a curriculum assessment tool. It's called I ready. That is required of us provide assessments of our students. And it became a requirement when we entered into this sort of virtual or hybrid instructional modality. Essentially, we have to have an instrument that can test engage your youngsters, determine where they are. Along the continuum versus where they ideally would be, should be. Had we been fully in the in the in-person instruction mode. But recognizing that virtual and hybrid are less than ideal instructional delivery systems. We needed again a tool to be able to assess the students, create, identify what the gaps are in instruction, create a plan to. Remedy those gaps and make sure that all of our youngsters are fully caught up and up to speed with where they need to be. That is not just a requirement looking backwards in time, but it is an ongoing requirement by virtue of the blueprint and current legislation that. Recently passed and continues not just from the spring, but will be a requirement of the summer of this fall. And in the next few years going forward, you'll notice that it is not recommended for funding within this budget. There's a reason for that and there'll be a couple of these. As you may know, the federal government has passed along to the state. Supplemental funding to allow us to carry on and continue. Many of the requirements or obligations that came. Upon us as a result of the rapid pivot into virtual learning or a hybrid learning, and this is one of those. So. While it is not included in the county executives recommended budget, it is for a reason and it is because we are going to fund that program. Through some of those grant opportunities. And there and again, there's going to be a couple of them. So don't. You know, don't fear or worry that the the cut in exec's budget is harmful to us because we have already signaled to the county admin. That we can take this cut in local funding because there is external funding. From the state and the federal government to pick up this cost. And again, I will point the rest of those out as we go along. We had asked for eight teachers and three bilingual assistants in our English language acquisition. Supports eleven, six have been recommended in the county executives budget. We asked for two and a half positions to finish. The build out of the triple E program in the Glen Burnie cluster, as you recall last year because of. Construction activities that at Richard Henry Lee and the joining school I use for housing with some of those students. We were not able to implement that program. This then allows us to complete the Glen Burnie cluster. In terms of our human resources ask, we had asked for ten dollar an hour increase for our daily subs or our long term substitutes. The county executives budget puts forward funding into that. Program to allow us to do a five dollar per day increase. So in lieu of a ten dollar. Increase will be a five dollar a day increase. And again, you'll see that mathematical happening. So five hundred and eight thousand six hundred and thirty three dollars towards that initiative. The next two items again are going to be tied into this swap of grants funding in lieu of county resources. So in instructional technology, we were required to acquire and stand up and we are in the process of doing exactly that. A learning management system that is currently paid in the current fiscal year. Out of some grant funding, we believed we were going to have to switch over to local funding. But the grant funding allows for a continuation of that. So we're going to pick up the year two and likely a few more future year costs. For the learning management system through that grant funding. The same true is the same is going to be true of the four hundred thousand dollar literacy. And training and materials again to help. Our instructors come up to speed on the teaching requirements and content requirements. To bring our students back up to on pace, learning and instruction. That again is going to be covered by a grant opportunity for us. Going down then for our continued expansion of full day pre K opportunities, we asked for. Two positions that was fully recommended for funding by the admin. We'd asked for eight psychologists, one of those eight are recommended for funding. We'd asked for six school, I'm sorry, ten school counselors. Three of which are recommended for funding within the administration's proposal. We'd ask for a half time social worker for our equity office. That is recommended for funding. We'd ask for six. Social workers, general social workers assigned to our student support services division. Three of those six have been recommended for funding. As we have in prior years, we do disaggregate our special ed requirements. Into birth to our birth to twenty one, that's our general special educators that are spread across our. You know, traditional one hundred twenty one plus buildings. We'd ask for fourteen and fourteen point four of those, seven and a half have been recommended for funding. We asked for fifteen point six specially site staffing. So those are for developmental centers that are regional centers, et cetera. You, as you recall, that was a heavy lift last year. That was a special focus area in last year. We gained a lot of ground there. This year, none of those fifteen point six are present recommended for funding. In student services, we'd ask for support for grant replacement for a secretary in student support services. We believe, however, that we can pick up that now as a continuation through other grant opportunities. So that's. Worrisome item. So teachers, in years past, we've really disaggregated our teacher ass into two different buckets. So it's your call. We had a category called teachers for enrollment. But as I said in my introductory remarks, our enrollment count is actually down this year, right? Because of the transitory, you know, effects of of the pandemic learning modality. So we did not ask for any teachers for enrollment. That makes sense. We do, however, have. Many of our classes remain and are projected to remain. Above what what our established student teacher ratios are per grade level. We had asked for a hundred teachers to allow us to make further inroads into those pre-existing class size issues. Though we had. So a hundred teachers that would be applied against those. And again, those arose because of those many, many year lean years. In which simply the county was not in a position to fund those teachers, right back. During the the tight years earlier in the in the decade and even the latter years of the prior decade before that. None of those have been recommended for funding. Similarly, we'd asked, the board had asked for thirteen. Teaching assistance for our kindergarten levels. None of those have been recommended for funding. The last three items fall into that category that I've alluded to now several times that they're not funded. Within the county executives proposal. However, we have been able to. Secure funding for them through grant or offset opportunities. So. Our unit, our teacher laptops, we will be able to relocate that funding to grant opportunities. Our student Chromebook replacements will be able to relocate those to grant opportunities. Our virtual learning and home instruction support initiatives will be able to move those over to grant opportunities as well. The bottom line then, on the unrestricted side, is that we had asked for two hundred and nine positions. A total of sixty eight point four million dollars, fifty two point nine of them are funded. For a total of thirty five point three million dollars in the unrestricted side. Adding in the matches in the restricted components. Brought our total ass to eighty three point eight million dollars, of which forty nine point seven million dollars is currently funded. The board had asked for a six point two million, six point two nine percent year over year increase. And the increase that is contained here within the county executives proposal is three point seven eight. With that, Madam Chair, we rest our brief presentation and turn it back. Over to you. I will say, as has been our norm. We would do our best this afternoon to address any questions and answers that you have here on the spot. Those that we're not able to answer, we have traditionally put those into a package. And shared them with Madam Auditor and Madam Council Administrator. And use that as the vehicle to get back to you. Anything else that we're not able to cover here in our brief time this afternoon. Madam Chair.
Much appreciated. We'll start with Ms. Radman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radman, District Six. So I have a whole series of questions. Should I just, I'll start with one and you tell me.
Let's start with one and we'll.
Okay, so my my biggest question to start with is regarding a budget item that we included in the F Y twenty budget. Which was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar audit. And I'm I know that that report was released earlier in twenty twenty. And so I'm curious what the progress is on implementing the recommendations of that audit. What savings have been identified from that audit or what plans do you have for the future in terms of additional implementation?
Well, I'll start with that one, Madam, Madam Councilmember. So I mean, the audit audit's been complete. It's been delivered to our board. That is being reviewed by our Board of Education and by the administration of the school district, line item by line item. We're working on a a timeline that is, as we all know, some of those items are. Are my term, low hanging fruit, fruit, maybe easily and quickly implementable. Some of them. Are bigger and longer term lifts or endeavors. So. We're going through those item by item with the board, with the superintendent and with the board's auditor. The board's auditor actually is taking the lead on going through and 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 tracking those.
Madam Chair, may I follow up, please?
Yes, go ahead.
So at this point, are there, you know, do you have any sort of list of the low hanging fruit items that you've already been able to address? And you know, the next ones going forward?
Again, like I, like I said, I mean, that information is a work in progress. And it's a sort of a living document that's being worked by the board's auditor between the Board of Education and the. And the office of the superintendent.
Thank you.
This is the chair. I'll remind everyone, I forgot that we were on auto captions today. So it makes it especially important to identify ourselves because. The auto captioner doesn't necessarily do the job. Okay, so call in Ms. Feedler next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feeder, District Five. So this is the first time, or maybe not the first time, but we certainly didn't have it in last year's comparative document. Could you just for clarification or reminder sake? Briefly describe the units one through five. What, who falls under which unit?
Yes, ma'am. Alex Chakno, Chief Operating Officer. So unit one is PAC, the Teachers Association. Most generally, right, teachers typically fall into that category, but it does have other. Like school counselors would fall into that category, et cetera. So there are a couple other individuals. Unit two is our essentially building administrative leadership. It's A E L. Again, the largest cohort is principals, assistant principals, but again, there are a couple other individuals that fall into A E L. Unit three is ASME. It is our support services workers. So think maintenance, operations, custodial, logistics, mail services. Many of those type of functions. Unit four is SEAC. That's largely our secretarial. But it also includes clerks, technicians, a lot of, again, support individuals in SEAC unit four. Unit five is an unrepresented unit. It is our professional employee unit. So. Councilwoman Beever think accountants, computer programmers, demographers. I mean, a a whole host of individuals in the school district that run. The a lot of the back office operations of the school system. So again, unit five, it's unrepresented. And then there's unit six, which is again, an unrepresented unit. And that's that's the executive leadership of the school district, I think superintendent, deputy superintendent. Myself, as well as our other assistant or associate superintendents in general.
Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Seknovich, I also have a question about last year's appropriation and where we stand. With respect to the transportation positions. I know last year when we had this discussion, it was going to take about a year to get people. Hired, trained, get programs in place and things like that. So I'm trying to figure out. If that money that was appropriated, if those positions were indeed advertised for, if they were hired and where we stand on that piece.
Yes, ma'am. Alex Chaknovich, there were seven positions, as I recall, in total. Six of them, so all seven have been advertised. Some of them got advertised multiple times. Six of those are fully filled. One remains to be unfilled. It has been advertised, recruited for, interviewed, but it remains unfilled. We are actively working on seven out of seven, though.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I ask one follow up?
Go ahead.
What what is the one we can't fill?
It is the is it is the essentially like. Number two position within the transportation division.
Okay.
It will be the the direct report to the supervisor of transportation. That's been the the hardest one to fill so far.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm just trying to follow along on the page. Mr. Seknovich's question about the catch up steps. So you just identified the units and I appreciated that. Am I to understand that the executive staff. Am I to understand that the executive staff is going to get a catch-up step for FY eleven to twelve as well as a mid-year catch-up for twelve to thirteen, in addition to the other bargaining units in there, too?
Alex Chekno, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. The answer to that is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Radman?
Thank you. Apologize for, Lisa Radman, District Six, apologize for the delay. I'm managing multiple tabs and windows here. I'm sure some of you can relate. So I wanted to just have a quick, or maybe not quick, but a check-in on the health insurance fund and what you can tell us about that, what contributions are anticipated for this year, on what balance is currently in place?
Sure. Alex Chekno, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. The, the health insurance fund, self-insurance fund is, is in a good place. Our goal is to have basically two months worth of claims paying ability, and we believe that is almost exactly where we're going to, to end up, Councilwoman. So we feel pretty comfortable with where we are in terms of both our, our target and our ending point for the current fiscal year. I will say that, and I'm sure the county's experience and everyone's experience has been the same. That is aided in part, and I'll say unfortunately, because of the number of individuals that have not accessed or as fully accessed healthcare as they may have in the past. They've either personally elected to defer going to the doctors or, or doing many of the things that they would, could, or should. And then, as you know, because of the pandemic, a lot, a lot of elective procedures, a lot of things were just stiny. So part of it is the individual's choice to maybe delay some of their medical opportunities. And some of it was foisted upon them because the provider or the, was closed, or the, the doctor was closed. So that has allowed us, allowed the fund to grow a little bit. We are, for your information, though, we are providing a premium holiday to our employees, right, because we're collecting funds from our employees, much like State Farm or Progressive, not to do an advertisement, but some of us got refund checks from our auto insurance companies because they over-collected on premiums and then because people weren't driving as much or getting into accidents as much, et cetera. So we essentially are doing the same thing. You know, we need to have a, a very healthy and stable healthcare fund. That is clearly our goal. But we also don't want to, to over-collect. And so we are going to be returning some of those premiums to the participants of our healthcare fund, thus allowing us to balance staying right around that two months' worth of claims paying ability target.
Um, okay, I admit I forgot whose flag went up next, but I think Ms. Feedler is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feeder, District Five. So, Mr. Seknovich, bear with me, and I hope I make this easy to track. So I'm going to try to review that first expense analysis section a little differently so that I make sure I understand it. And that's salary-related and back steps. So if I am, and I'm going to break it down in several ways. So if I am an employee of Unit One or Unit Two through Four, I will be getting a mid-year FY fifteen, sixteen, a mid-year FY twelve to thirteen, a catch-up step, FY twenty-two step, and a COLA.
I don't exactly think so. I just, I'm Chief Operating Officer. So let me, let me. So you want me to focus on Unit One first?
I was, sure, we can do that, yeah.
So if you are a Unit One member, you are going to get the other half of your FY twenty-one mid-year step that's already been implemented, except it needs to continue to be funded. If you are eligible, that means you're less than Step Twenty-Five in PACT, you are going to get a step increase. You are going to get a one percent COLA. You are going to get a backstep that you did not receive in the FY twelve, thirteen year. And you will receive a mid-year implementation of the backstep that you did not receive in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. If you are in units two through six, you will get, if, if you're eligible, you'll get a step increase in FY twenty-two or the equivalent. You'll get a one percent COLA that's applicable to everybody. You will get, if you are, you'll get an eleven, twelve, an FY eleven, twelve mid-year, I'm sorry, a full-year catch-up for the FY eleven, twelve year. Again, if your unit's two through six, and then if your unit's two through six, you will also get a mid-year backstep or catch-up step that was due back in the FY twelve, thirteen year. So I think we almost said the exact same thing. The first part, it was your very first sentence that I think we, we slipped up on a little bit.
Yes, so Madam Chair, if I may ask a follow-up question? I'm just trying to understand if I sit in the chair of Unit One or Unit Three, what am I looking at depending on what year of service I am in? And I know that that's probably a lengthier answer than we have time for today. So is it possible to put something together to share with the council to break it down like that?
Yes, we could easily put together a, a chart for you that we would share through the Auditor's Office and, and the Council Administrator's Office to you. And what it would do is it would, it would show you what the average. So our skills, Ms. Feedler, are not exactly the same all the way through. I mean, they wiggle a little bit through a twenty-five-year step history or a twenty-year step history, depending on which bargaining unit. So what we will do is profile, you know, kind of what the average product typical increases for each one of those chunks. And we'll kind of put it into a spreadsheet for you, so it's easily discernible if you think that would help.
It would. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I noticed Superintendent had something to, to add as well.
I was just, so I appreciate, thank, this is Georgia Alado, Superintendent Schools. I, I was just going to add, Councilwoman Feedler, that in very, very simplistic terms, all units, all employees will receive a step or step equivalent and a one percent COLA. And then all those that are eligible, units one through six, depending on their years of service and time with us, if they were employed at, at those times, would be eligible for another catch-up step and a half. One point five catch-up steps. If that's at all helpful, in very simplistic terms.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Switching gears for, for just a second, and this is really more for my own curiosity than anything else, since it's not part of the county's budget, but the student Chromebook replacements. I think I saw that you all are going back in the fall, five days a week. What are the Chromebook replacements for, if that's the case?
For Alex Chekno, Chief Operating Officer. So Chromebooks basically have a, a life of four years. That, that's just like your laptop, right? It gets old, it stops, it slows down and runs out of memory, et cetera. So basically, we've got to replace a percentage of the, the fleet just because of their lifecycle. And then, in addition to that, we have to account for like everything else we do in a school district, Ms. Hare, we have to account for, you know, things that got lost or damaged or stolen, et cetera. So a very small component of it is for that, but both our desktops, our laptops, our Chromebooks, all of those have to be cyclically or periodically replaced so that they continue to, to function at the proficiency level that we require.
For the students, not the teachers, but for the students?
All of the above. So the Chromebooks are student-specific. The teachers, we've migrated away from desktops and over to laptops.
Mr. Volkey, if you're there, now would be your turn.
Can I clarify something on that last question? I'm sorry. I don't, Dr. Alado, can you speak to the fact that you envision learning is going to happen a bit differently? Because the question I heard from Ms. Hare is perhaps, why do we need as many Chromebooks when we're going back into the classroom?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. South. Georgia Alado, Superintendent Schools, and I'd see exactly the reason, thank you, that I had raised my hand. Councilwoman Heron, to the, to the members of the, the County Council, we are in a new day in Anaroma County Public Schools with regard to technology. So we have where you've probably read about and heard about school systems in the state. There are a couple, and certainly around the country, that have gone to one-to-one devices. You've probably heard that term, where every student gets a device. Well, we're there now. We hadn't planned on being there, but we're there now. And so we will be utilizing Chromebooks as part of our curricular implementation from this point forward. So we are now building, we didn't have a year ago, a platform to to distribute Chromebooks to all of our students. We've had to do that because of the COVID, because of the pandemic. And now we're building that into the future. So you will see future budget items that will allow us to build, build out not only the Chromebooks for students, but laptops for teachers so they can be more mobile. So we have, will be much more flexible, but now our curricular implementation will involve the Chromebooks with the students. They'll carry them around, they'll be part of their everyday life now, back and forth from school and throughout their school buildings.
Thank you for that clarification. I think Mr. Pruski is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Andrew Pruski, two requests and I guess one comment. First of all, thank you to the panel. Always a great presentation. You guys, you know, gave us the information that we need, and obviously, we're going to dig a little bit deeper. I do not notice the school playgrounds will be replaced this year, but I can get the information on that. I know I added that in the budget about six years ago, and I'm proud that it's still there because the schools that can't raise the money for playgrounds are actually covered. And I'd just like to know what they are, and I know you focus on Title One schools and schools that can't afford it. So I'd just like to know because, you know, some people may ask. The other thing is, the state awarded a bond program for the West County Teen Center. I do not see the two staff members in this budget. I know Bartlett and Delegate Henson put in a bill that provided a site, but I'm not sure where they are in the budget, so if somebody could follow up with that. And then, just as far as the healthcare, I just kind of want to make a comment on that. I know that's always a reoccurring thing. I, I happen to serve on the Board of Ed and now in the council. We need to be careful with that. I know a lot of people look at that as a source of revenue to maybe move around or add, but do note that sometimes that's one-time money, in particularly COVID, the pandemic. I think, and again, maybe, Mr. Chekno, but you can reiterate something here, but I'm assuming since teachers weren't in the building, people were quarantining, we didn't have the, the knee surgeries, the you know, whatever healthcare stuff. So I, I don't know if you can clarify that, because again, I know for years people have asked, well, let's move that to salary, let's add a position. And again, I, I'm not saying that you can't look at it. We all have to look at it. Axiom, I know does the audit. I'm sure they still, you guys still have that, that, you know, looks that. But if you could just clarify that piece, and then those other two requests, you can simply send an email, include my council members. I'd appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure. Alex Cheknovich, the playgrounds we'll cover as part of our capital budget, so we do have a request in there, but we will provide you the, the locations. So we would be targeting that funding for, if funded. Your second question was the West County Teen Center Grant. I am, I'm not aware of that. We'll follow up on that and see what it is. We've been tracking grants pretty aggressively, both us, Mr. Barron and Mr. Trumbauer. So we'll, we'll follow up on that. It didn't hit our radar yet. I will say, as I, as I, you know, we, we do have the ninety-day report and some of the other things from the state, Mr. Pruski, but the state has not yet done all of their data dumps, all of their financials. We don't have that. All we're still working on is what the General Assembly passed, not what the individual departments or agencies. But as soon as we can get a hold of that, we'll, we'll follow up on it and get it worked in. And then your third one wa- is exactly on point. So as I said earlier, the reason our fund balance has increased somewhat this year, year-over-year is attributable to, to really two factors, right? One, one factor is the employees making their own individual decisions because they were uncomfortable going into the doctor's office or being around other individuals in the office. That's part of it. And part of it is, and that's your example about the knee surgery, I'm selecting, I am electing to put off my knee, knee surgery. But the other half of that equation is a lot of elective surgeries were actually shut down. I could have wanted to get my knee replaced, but orthopedic surgeons were only allowed to do emergency procedures, not things that could have been deferred because of the health restrictions, because of PPE redirections, because of blood bank constraints, et cetera. So you're exactly on point, Mr. Pruski. I, I do think that, that a lot of that is resolving itself. And I think in the year ahead, we will see a, actually, a much greater utilization of healthcare because doctor offices have reopened. Things that people have put off, they will now want to get done. And I think in general, people will be more comfortable going to get their eyes checked, their, their, you know, dental work done, their preventative medicine checks, the things that all of us have put off. Come on, I know you guys did it. I know I put off many things. But in the year ahead, I think many of us are going to return back to doing what we should be doing. So you're right. I think there's going to be an over-utilization in the year ahead, and we're very cognizant of that. We do keep tabs on all of that with both our primary healthcare provider, right? Blue Cross Blue Shield Care First. But yes, we have outside expertise from, from Aon and others. Do we get a lot of it? A lot of healthcare industry intelligence from, to monitor those various moving parts. It is for folks here in the Board of Ed, they know the healthcare fund is very near and dear to my heart. And it is something we spend an awful lot of time monitoring here.
Ms. Radman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radman, District Six. I realize I should have said this before. In, in full disclosure, I am a, a part-time employee of Anaroma County Public Schools. I wanted to just start out by making a comment. Mr. Seknovich mentioned that teachers that arrived while others that were already in the system had pay, pay-steps docked, fully agreed to give up those steps. And I, I, for any of my colleagues, I was one of those people, and so I have the, that very experience, and I'm happy to share because I feel like that that statement actually leaves out quite a bit of context. So any of my colleagues, I'd be happy to discuss that with you further. My question, however, is related to vacancies. And I'm wondering, this may not be something you could answer right here and right now, but I would very much like to know what the vacancies are, what the vacancies, you know, the number of vacancies in each of the, the different bargaining units.
Alex Cheknovich, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. You're right, I don't, I don't have that here. I will say, though, Ms. Radman, that, that our vacancy rates are very low. Thankfully, are very low right now, but we'll pull together that information and, and get it, again, through the channels that we discussed earlier.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Feedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feeder, District Five. I have a question on one of the line items. So I know that there is, for the special education, specialty site staffing needs, that is, that was not in the budget, but for the birth-to-twenty-one program staffing needs, last year the budget fulfilled thirty-two point eight positions as requested. This budget fulfills seven and a half of fourteen point four requested. My question is, is the reduction in the initial ask from the board a result? My question is, is the reduction in the initial ask from the board a result of lower enrollment? In birth to twenty-one, or is it a result of last year's larger allocation? Reducing the need to staff up at that level again this year? And will we continue to see a reduction in asks in this area? Or is this going to be kind of the pace of growth? That was three questions, so I apologize.
Sir Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. So uh special education is is, it's very interesting, um Ms. Fiedler, in that. We essentially have to do uh annual, we have to do IEP evaluations. Um and it it's sort of a a multi-pronged evaluation of the youngsters and. You know, some of it is done by the special educators, but we have uh other services, so it can be. You know, vision, hearing, speech, it could be physical therapy, occupational therapy, et cetera. So. Um the this, our special ed requirements are largely driven by that IEP uh process. That process then also has two other moving parts, that is the total number of students eligible for special ed. Uh we are a growing school district. Again, set aside temporary temporarily uh the COVID phenomenon. But on a percentage basis, um Ms. Fiedler, we're the third fastest growing population in uh student population in the state. Anaronda is the third fastest growing public school jurisdiction on a on a percentage basis. And so as our numbers of students rise. The corollary is the number of special education students that are eligible also rises. So there is a correlation there. So there will be asks in the year ahead. But inside of that number also. And this drills deeper into that IEP uh information is. The the number of students that require either uh more extensive or more expansive services, right? So that it's not just how many youngsters are eligible, right? By by counting noses, but it is the next level down is. What is the degree, the service hours, the types of hours, et cetera. So. That is going to continue to evolve each and every year as we do those required evaluations of the students. So I I think that's, that's your first two out of your three. And then, yes, eh and as I mentioned in my remarks earlier. Uh there was a big heavy lift last year in the special ed arena, as evidenced by the budget that was adopted. But recommended by the exec and adopted by this council, right? So uh a a lot of the, I'll just call it, you know, deficit that we were finding ourselves in, and I'm using that word very loosely. A lot of that was made up in the prior year that that drove a slightly lower ask this year. Um but but the ask is still pretty substantial, right? You add those two numbers together and they're, you know, they're over thirty positions. Um between them. So that need is there. We do believe that enrollment growth is going to continue to increase. We think the number of students identified and eligible for special ed are going to continue to increase. And we do think that the degree type or uh service levels for those youngsters is uh is going to increase. In the years ahead and all of those categories that I mentioned.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I ask one follow-up question?
I think since you had three, I might.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um Allison Picker, District Two. Keep moving on the screen. Uh thank you all for being here, as always. I wanted to, we. Uh like my colleague Ms. Fiedler, I'm trying to track the compensation uh laid out and I just want to make sure. As we are looking at numbers, that all means all. I know we, when I served on the board. Uh the board was very committed to um making sure we treated all uh units equally as we were. Um allotting salary increases. So I think what I see here is. Basically, um salary enhancements for all units. Based on your employment timeframe. Is that correct?
Uh Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, that that is essentially correct. Uh the the PAC unit one is slightly ahead of the other groups, but yes, uh it is making significant inroads. For all bargaining units of. In the exhibit that's before you, so you're essentially correct.
Okay, that's just um Allison Picker again. This this is really, to me, when we talk about um everything from closing the opportunity gap. To equity, um while while the Board of Education is uh tasked with educating the youth of this county. It is also one of the largest employers and I think it's important for this council and the Board of Education to remember that. As we are looking to treat all employees um equally and with the dignity that they deserve. Um especially this year when we've had our food service workers, our maintenance workers in those buildings. Um working tirelessly. I've driven by many a school as the food service workers were out there distributing meals in in the rain, sleet and snow. Um so that's very important to me um to keep in mind as a council, as the final arbiter of this budget. And then I just wanted to add my personal note, uh if I could, about Chromebooks. It's my understanding, just for those folks that don't have children in the schools, I have one at every level. Um they all have their Chromebook and I believe they are going to be keeping that Chromebook as they go through. Uh all of their years. They stay with them as long as they don't break them or spill soda on them or. Correct, is that, that's right. They've been, they've been, their Chromebook has been distributed and as long as it's working, it's theirs until they finish twelfth grade.
Correct. Thank you. I'm sorry, Georgia, a lot of superintendent schools. Yes, uh Ms. Picker, the answer is yes, the students will will continue to distribute to new students. Those students that have them will keep them and move from one grade level to the next. Those seniors, as they graduate, will ask for them back, or if they leave the system and transfer out, will ask for them back. Somewhere along the way, most likely during the student's history with us, their Chromebook will get refreshed. It's about every four years, so we'll take back the old and replace with a new version of that Chromebook.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm really glad you asked that, Ms. Picker. I'm relieved to know that's the plan. I thought we were getting, trading them in every year. Okay, I think Ms. Harris is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um okay, given that last year and funding was probably a little bit wonky, just. Given the shift and everything, I I am assuming there are some categories where uh you know, money ran high or maybe that, you know, COVID funds were assisting and things like that. I also assume there are some categories that probably had significant underruns and the one that jumps to my mind obviously is transportation. Um I it, one, do we have a significant underrun at this point in the transportation bucket from the. Um from the school system? And number two, if so, I mean, I'm looking on here and I see fund balance of thirteen million dollars, which is sort of what we see every year. Um so if that's the case, eh you know, where is that extra money, i- if it is extra, you know, where is that accounted for?
Well, check no, Chief Operating Officer, uh we like the county, we we reconcile all those in the fourth quarter. Uh we will be bringing that to our board uh most likely on May the nineteenth. And then bringing it to the County Council for uh legislation as we do uh as the county does. Uh every, every year here uh in June, once adopted by the board. Uh you're right, we have under expenditures and over expenditures uh in the categories. That's what that fourth quarter reconciliation does. Uh transportation is the most obvious one in terms of under expenditure. I mean, you'll, and I I know you touched on it briefly, Ms. Harris, but. Uh really, there's over five, there's five point three million dollars of that under expenditure that we have to redeploy. If you take a look at the at the budget exhibit, there's a two point three million dollars that you referenced, that we have to make up for that local loss. Uh we also have to find under our uh sofa cushions. Uh three point oh five nine million dollars to fund the other half of the mid-year teacher raise that was not included in here too. So we're gonna have to redeploy uh some of that funding to the teacher salary line item as well. Um and then the rest of the categories kind of shift around, right? We spent a a lot of money on PPE. We spent a lot of money on other uh technology that we didn't envision. We try to utilize our our grants and other external resources to the maximum extent possible to to try to protect the local. Uh the county share of of anything, but again, we're working all those, uh we're taking it to our board on the nineteenth of May. And as is our norm, you'll, the county will probably get it the day after that. Uh to to work with the admin to put legislation for it. And then we'll go, we'll appear before you at a work session or at a council session and we'll go category by category, line by line, like we do each and every year.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Radvian.
Um thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, um. Actually, can can I, can you come back to me? I need to get organized here, my.
Uh certainly, I'll call on Mr. Volkey and then Ms. Fiedler and then back to you.
Thank you, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um Mr. Shaknovich, I may have missed this. Did you say how much maintenance of effort was this year?
Uh Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, I I did not say that, um but you get that from Mr. Crumbauer the other day. It's it's about fourteen point seven million dollars, give or take a little bit. It was in the presentation and Mr. Crumbauer shared with you as well.
Okay, thank you. And then just to follow up on that, so kind of the real question is, I did the math on that very nice. And I always appreciate the way that you put together your bu- budget present- presentation, so kudos to you. But on that nice uh one pager about. Sort of with the BOE approved, requested difference, county exec proposed. Looking just at what the county executive has proposed to pay in terms of salary. So be that the mid-year comp, the steps, the colas, the catch-ups, all of that. It totals out to about twenty-nine point nine nine one million of your thirty-five million dollar total funding that the county executive has proposed. What in that set is the highest priority for the board? And what i- if we had to look at that and say like, we're gonna fund something and we have to make tough choices, where is the priority? Because I see that there was more that was requested by the Board of Ed and then there's things that are funded by the county exec. But if we were to look at that and say, what are the priority items? Can you give me that?
So I will start with the nine an- non-answer, Mr. Volkey, that, I mean, it is the, it is the board, you know, the board's budget, so.
And and thank you, Mr. Volkey, for the questions. George, a lot of superintendent schools and I'll ask uh President Ellis. Um and she could talk about the uh priorities of the board.
And I will attempt to do that. Um so um. And bear with me, I'm gonna ask you uh both Dr. Alato and Mr. Shaknovich to step in if um. If I'm digging in too deep, because um understandably, um we're talking about bargaining units and um. And negotiations and those types of things, so um I I don't want to overstep there, um but. Um the way the board has discussed it, um you know, our first obligation is the uh annual step. Because um basically that is contractually. I believe what we have agreed to whenever that's possible, whenever the funding is there. Um and then um so then you're left with um the makeup steps versus a cola. Um I I guess you could look at it that way, since those are the other two portions of the package. And uh to be honest, the board has not parsed out which is a priority. So when Dr. Alato presented his recommended budget to the board, it included. Um uh and the annual step increase and it included um a cola. And the board um voted to add additional funding for uh makeup steps. Um and I I think I outlined why we consider that to be extremely important right now. Um we have um funding that we're going to be obligated um to provide under the blueprint. And it's going to make it harder and harder um to address those back steps as the years go on. And um eh just basically as as an employer, A A C P S. Um eh we believe that equity is is important when we have teachers coming in from other counties. With equivalent experience and being um onboarded by their peers and making more money than they are. Um it 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 becomes, it's, it can be demoralizing um for the staff. And um we do on a regular basis lose teachers to other surrounding districts. So I understand um why this particular issue has been important um to our staff. So eh um it, the back, the back steps have been a priority for the board to address. But we don't want to, we also have to remain competitive. Um so you know, the call is important. For um for new hires and and for our very most experienced teachers. Um we just, eh we feel we're in a place right now where if we can a- address this. This is, this is not something that year after year is going to be an issue if we can address it now.
Okay, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I'm going to go back to the special education arena. Um I know that there, at least um anecdotally, there was frustration in this population. As COVID restrictions made it both challenging for educators in special education. And families in special education. Um I think first about speech therapy. Um and any, any type of service where close contact or mouth coverings. Really made it difficult to do the job. Um children, obviously, when they're in some of those services, need to see mouths moving. To learn and and to move forward in their services. So my question is. Where are we now in special education? Are we on similar ground and heading at a similar pace? With our um brick and mortar uh services, non-special education? Are, are we seeing a disproportionate backslide with our special education students? As opposed to those who are not receiving special education services? And are any of the positions to aid in the backslide? Meaning a child who maybe had two areas where they needed two different professionals. Has kind of gone back in their ser- in their um uh how they are moving forward in those services. And now requires three individuals or spec- specialists. Um not necessarily. This is more from my own personal knowledge to understand what's going on, just because I've heard some back and forth chatter.
So this, Georgia, a lot of superintendent schools, thank you uh Ms. Fiedler for the question. Um you you threw a couple of things in there uh for, so let me see if I if I can address them and if I don't address them appropriately, please, please stop me. Um part of what you speak of is the terms that we use are recovery and compensatory services. So we've got students, as you have said, that uh in the special needs world, it just doesn't work in virtual. It's really hard to put your hands on a child for PT or OT services if they're not physically there with you, right? As an example. So we've got students that are behind in their service hours in things that they need for their growth. And we need to supply them. Um and so as we are coming out of COVID and bringing more and more students. And those were our first students to bring in two days a week. They are our first students that we are inviting back for four days a week. Because we know those are the students that we are less likely to be able to reach and teach through the virtual environment. Not all those families have agreed to send their children in, but many have. So um we will go through a long process over the next year plus. Of going through each individual student's IEP across the system. Um and this is being dictated by the Maryland State Department of Education. They've given us a rubric that we will follow. For each of our students where we will go through their IP and count the hours and count the services. And if there are recovery services needed, and this goes to your other part, those students that are behind because they haven't had the services. Um and then some of the compensatory, which are students that just wanted those and needed those services and we just weren't able to supply. We will begin to add those hours up, for lack of better terms. Have a meeting with the family, discuss what compensatory services, recovery services will look like. Have a meeting with the family, discuss what compensatory services, recovery services will look like. That could begin this summer into the fall, spring, and into the next summer and beyond. Um, because we simply don't have enough special educators, to your last point, that can make up all these services. So it's, it would be really difficult for me, George Arlato's a special educator, to have my class or my regular caseload. And give the compensatory services for the students that lost services this past year. And so these are parts of the things that we have to work on. So, um, the state, uh, uh, M S D E has come up with a rubric for each of the school systems to use, to go through and mark. Um, a- and determine what the needs are. Then we will meet with the families in an I E P meeting and say, here's what we determined. Um, what do you want to take advantage of? And then we will have to begin to supply those services to those students. Uh, it's not gonna be easy, no question about it, because right time marches on where I have to continue to instruct students during the regular day. As we get into the fall, so we'll try and do much of that during the summer months. Does that at all answer your question?
You answered my question perfectly, so thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, I didn't realize I was on, wasn't muted the whole time, um, and thank you for coming back to me. Um, my question, uh, is related to the virtual teaching positions. So I'm curious, um, I guess two questions related to that. So the first one is, um, why couldn't these positions be filled by existing teachers? I I mean, the teaching staff of A A C P S has been teaching virtually for a year. Um, and then my second question is, um, uh, is seven enough? I I have, um, you know, heard from many, uh, neighbors, um, especially of elementary age parents who are concerned about even in the fall. Um, sending their children back into their buildings, they have, you know, certain conditions that may make them more vulnerable if they were to contract COVID. So, um, I just, I guess, uh, obviously that's a discussion mainly for the board, but, you know, the budget aspect of it, I'm interested in. And anything else you can share at this point?
So, I'm, Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer, let me, let me just take the first one. Uh, Ms. Rodvian, it, so these are seven new positions. They all have to be advertised and recruited for. So, you know, the, the, there'll be a job description, right, the, but likely if you're a certified educator. You know, you'll be, uh, either through the voluntary transfer process or through the normal, uh, uh, promotion hiring process. Any positions that we have will have to get recruited for, so there certainly is a a potential that it could be an existing educator that applies for. One of these positions and then I'll, I'll allow that for Arlato to, to address the second half of your question.
Thank you, Alex. George Arlato Superintendent of Schools, um, uh, Council Vice Chair Rodvian, this is, um. Uh, if you'll remember, uh, this time a year ago, we had basically the same line item. On our budget request and it was not filled. Um, when we developed this budget that's before you, this was in November and December. As we were developing the budget to present to the Board of Education, then for the Board of Education to, uh, to debate and then adopt now. The re- the request that's before you. The original plan, uh, Ms. Rodvian, was that we were, and this is pre-COVID, and that's the reason I mentioned that was on a budget a year ago. When COVID, our plan was to build a virtual school that we would begin to invite back those students. That are currently at, on home teaching. So it's the parent that wants their child to be virtual, um, but we did not have a vehicle to make them A A C P S students. And so we wanted to build that vehicle, build a virtual school and begin to bring homes, invite homeschooled students back. And so we were gonna build this virtual school and this was the first step in that. Certainly COVID hit, and as you said, we now have many, many teachers that have a great deal of experience teaching the virtual environment. So now we have turned this and we are in the process of building a virtual school. So we are, we are, plan is to have students, uh, grades three through twelve. That need it and desire it to be in, to remain fully virtual in the fall. So we're in the process of building it, so we've taken these dollars that are no longer requested. And we've put them into, uh, some that we're gonna utilize some of the federal grant money that allows us to use this money over the next three years. And begin to build a virtual school. It's something we should have as a school system. Put COVID aside, it's something I believe we should have as a school system to offer to that student or family that most need it or desire it. And there are a number of reasons why a student might take advantage of it. You may know some of them in your teaching career, that student that has anxiety so bad, they literally can't walk in the door of the school. And those students right now, as you well know, are thriving in the virtual environment, so we wanna create that. And then lastly, as, as Mr. Sheknovich pointed out, absolutely, some of those teachers, as we develop that, we will advertise for those teachers. That want to teach in the virtual environment. But you have to want to and be skilled at it. And so it won't be as simply as picking and choosing and transferring people. People will apply for those positions. We'll have to have virtual counselors and teachers and T As and school psychologists that will operate within this virtual world.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Arlato. So I, it sounds like I was sort of mixing apples and oranges. There's the virtual teaching needed for, uh, because of COVID. Um, and then there's virtual teaching that was planned to create this virtual school. And there may be some overlap, but they really were two separate, um, two separate ideas, two separate things going forward. Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, so I, I didn't follow up on it earlier when I asked the question, but I'm gonna follow up now. Uh, so Ms. Ellis, I appreciate the information you tried to give me in terms of the board's, uh, priorities and and. Uh, I know that it's not easy to sort of pick that or have to answer that question. I guess the one question I do have is this, uh, we've, we have now, we're in the third year of doing budgets, this council. And every year that we've had a budget, we have had a request in some form or fashion for catch-up steps or makeup steps. Um, so, I mean, I see the list that came through the Board of Ed, I see what was funded by the County Exec. Deductive reasoning tells me that if we don't fund them this year, they'll be back next year. But in addition to the requests that are on here, what else is coming? What additional catch-up steps are folks asking for? I mean, because I heard you say, there's gonna be an end to this, right? There's gonna be a point where we say, we're caught up, we're there. Where is that? How much money is that? I just, I I I'm not sure I understand fully. The entire picture and it's hard to sort of say, we're gonna do this one this year and the next year we see another one and we say, oh, well, that's another. Wh- what's sort of the end, if you know, or if anybody from the administration knows? I mean, when do we get to a place where everybody says, okay, now we have actually been made whole? And what is that number? What is that amount?
Thank you for the question, um. So I, I, I think the answer to that question is if you look at the board's request, um, that went to the County Executive. That's your answer. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sheknovich, I think that got us to where we wanted to be, um, so. That, I, I think, in a nutshell, that answers your question. Um, and then moving forward, it's, you know, just, um, normal, um. Salary increases that you would expect, um, aligned with the economy at the time. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, thank you. So that, that, what it shows me is that the catch-up steps that are laid out here on the board's request is it. That's the end. That's where we, we've reached the finish line.
That is the end and, um, again, uh, just to, for, I mean. You prefaced your previous question with, you know, the, the portion of the, um. The budget increase for this year that, that is going to salaries, um, you know, obviously, education is, it's a. It's people business, it's relationships, it's, it's teachers and guidance counselors and food service workers. And, um, everyone who impacts our students' lives and touches our students' lives. And, um, I, 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 I just think, um, we, we all share, um. That as a priority, relationships and and, um, having a healthy environment for our students. And, um, that is the, I think, one of the top priorities of funding in, in education. Um, it touches our students directly.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the answer.
Mr. Volkey. Madam, Madam Chair, Mr. Volkey, earlier you asked for the M O N E, M O E number, I told you fourteen point seven, that was an error, it's eighteen point seven. So, and and as everybody knows, my team and the state, uh, the M O E number has been, uh, crazy this year. It was influenced by some legislation that happened in the ver- very last minute of this session as well. The Kerwin bill, uh, actually influenced that number too, so it's actually eighteen point seven is the, the hard number. Apologize for earlier.
So, uh, we have two more council members with their hands raised. I'm hoping we can, since it's three o'clock, we've been going since one, we should take a break. Um, I'd like us to be able to wrap up the operating and then have a break and come back for the capital so we can be fresh. So hopefully, you all can ask your questions and then we'll break. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, so I'm gonna go back to the Chromebooks really quickly. Do we have, um, an estimate, or maybe it's a perfect world and we've had no damaged Chromebooks or lost Chromebooks? Um, do we have any information on that? And if there are damaged Chromebooks or lost Chromebooks in the future, who covers the replacement cost?
Uh, Alex Sheknovich, so, um, we've had just under three thousand, probably in total. That have been, you know, damaged in one way, shape or form. Now, damage can range from, uh, you know, almost small and inconsequential. And easily fixed, uh, to, you know, it's in pieces, right? And and can't, Humpty Dumpty can never be put back together. So it's, it's in the upper two thousands. Uh, we, you know, we do, uh, have our own, uh, repair, uh, capacity. And in some cases, we outsource that, that's up to the point that, um, that of, a unit is fixable, uh, in one way, shape or form. Again, through our own resources or through the warranties that we have on the system. Uh, but we do have, uh, much like, uh, if, uh, if, if, uh, you know. Youngster lost or, uh, destroyed their, uh, their capitalist textbook, right? Uh, the high school would say, you know, would, would give the kid a bill, right? For the, the textbook they got lost or damaged or something happened to it. And so we do have a, a recovery mechanism and it's, it's the same process as we would use. On a, uh, damaged library book or textbook or, or some other, uh, school, that, that's handled at the schoolhouse level. The principals and the business manager have those mechanisms in place and that is what they would use.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District Six, and this actually is my last question. Um, I'm not sure if this is information that you have with you. But, um, if we were to fund the County Executive's budget with respect to compensation for each of the units this year. Um, would you be able to tell me what is left to make, um, all of the employees in eat and broken down by unit? Um, whole, like what would be left after this year? And I, I'm guessing, I don't know if you have that in front of you, but if not, if you would be willing to send that, that would be awesome.
Yes, ma'am, Alex Sheknovich, I, I mean, essentially, if, if the board, I think Ms. Ellis, you know, sorta. Hit the nail on the head in her comments. If the, if the board's request was fully funded, which is the left-hand column of that exhibit that you have before you. If that was fully funded, uh, then essentially there would be, there would be, uh, nothing left. In arrears, right? There would be no remaining catch-up steps or differentials between experience credits and, and salary steps, et cetera. So, uh, you know, you, you've asked for the math, the, the value of the difference. And I don't, I'm not gonna break my calculator right now, but it's the bottom line of the left-hand column versus the bottom line of the right-hand column. Those two have a, a gap between, I mean, I think Mr. Volkey behind the scenes was doing the math while I was talking, um, but, you know. So that's really it, that, that's really, there would not be a request next year. For yet more backsteps or more experience, uh, credit differentials, uh, uh, et cetera. But we can certainly calculate that number and get it to you, uh, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, uh, very much, I really appreciate that.
Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, I have two more questions and then I am done. Um, really quickly, on the P P E increase for contract charter schools. Is there a reason that that could not be funded through grant dollars?
Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer, they actually are eligible for grants and are receiving grants, um, because the, the federal and the state. Um, um, various grant mechanisms have had opportunities for charter and contract schools. Uh, some of those, they apply directly, some of those, they were, apply through us as an agent or surrogate. So that is, that is true and that's happening, but that's not the answer you were looking for. This is, this is base conventional funding. There, basically, the way Maryland law operates is that, um, they receive. And I'm just gonna call it tuition, but they receive tuition money that is essentially equivalent to about ninety-eight percent. We're allowed to keep, uh, a two percent overhead, but they get ninety-eight cents per dollar. So when our budget goes up by whatever that proportion of level is, their budget has to go up as well. That's in state law, um, and so, you know, this is a very kind of a brute force calculation. That brings us into compliance with state law on the unrestricted operating budget side. But yes, they are very aggressive, they apply, even before it is COVID. They can apply for grants and they do, they're very good at it, we help them. Um, and then more recently, through the various federal or, or governor's grants, they've been applying directly or applying through us. And we help them as much as we possibly can.
Okay, that was very helpful in explaining that line item. Madam Chair, may I ask my final question?
You may, if you promise to move to recess after your question.
Yes, I can do that. Um, so just looking at instructional supplies on page one seventy-five of the budget book. Um, I noticed F Y twenty, the original versus F Y twenty-one, I'm sorry, F Y twenty-one original versus F Y twenty-one estimate. There was a significant increase and I would assume that that is all COVID-related. I remember kids were sent home with backpacks of materials, et cetera. Um, it, in the proposed budget, there is still an increase. From F Y twenty-one to F Y twenty-two with the lowered enrollment numbers. I'm trying to understand why that is going up instead of level or down.
For Alex Sheknovich, uh, there are essentially two answers to that. One is we do, this is the F Y twenty-two, so this is the budget for the year ahead, not, not the year currently. So we do anticipate to have, uh, the, the bulk of our enrollment, that the part of us return. So a good chunk of those youngsters will return. We are also a growing county. So whether it's through development or in migration, et cetera, we're also experiencing enrollment growth. So that's, that's part of your answer. The second part of your answer, though, is that this, this Board of Education, this superintendent, uh, made a, a, a very purposeful. And, uh, and tactful decision a number of years ago to have us, the school district. To the extent that we can increasingly absorb more of the fees and supply costs. That previously were passed along to parents. So, um, you may be familiar, and and I'm not gonna say nickel and dime, but you may be familiar in. Years ago, long supply lists were sent home to parents via their youngsters. And then we would charge a fee to go to this camp or that event or this field trip or that. So there was fee upon fee and supply, whatever. Um, the Board of Education and consultation with the superintendent a number of years ago. Said that we, essentially, that, that was not the way to go, right? We should not be sending these very long supply lists home, we should not be hitting up families for fees for this and that and this and that. So very purposely, uh, the Board of Education, the superintendent said, year over year. We're going to chip away at that to, to lessen the amount of fees, to lessen the amount of supplies that we're asking our students and parents. To send into schools and we've been sort of making inroads into that sort of tactical decision. So there's really two parts to your answer, the enrollment piece and then this year-over-year strategic plan to eliminate the, the nuisance fees. And the supply, and the supply requests.
That was perfect, thank you. Answered my question.
May I have a motion to recess for fifteen minutes?
So move, Volkey.
Back it, Allison Pickering.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, this council stands in recess until three twenty-five P M. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I hope you've had a good recess.
Thank you. You too. Would you like me to, do you want me to call a quick roll?
I would like you to call the roll, please.
Okay, Ms. Pickard.
Here.
Mr. Volkey.
Here.
Mr. Pruski.
Still here.
Ms. Feidler.
Here.
Ms. Radman.
Here.
Ms. Hare.
Here.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Lacy, we have all seven council members and our county auditor present.
Wonderful. Mr. Shaknovich, we'd like you to proceed to the Capitol presentation, please.
Thank you, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. And I believe the council administrator will put up a graphic here for us to look at momentarily. PC before you is the uh, the uh, juxtaposition between the county executives' proposed uh, capital budget. And that which was requested by the Board of Education. I'll just give you a very brief orientation for the document before you. The uh, capital budgets are line item appropriated. The very first column shows you in priority order, uh, what the uh, project is. The second one is a verbal description of the project, the location or the category. The third column is the Board of Ed's request. The fourth column over is the county executive's proposal. Uh, a few other things by way of orientation before we dive into the line item is that. Uh, the color coding is such that if it's banded in a white font, that means it's an exact match. Uh, so if you look at uh, line item one, for example, you'll see uh, a one point two million dollar uh, health and safety uh, request. That means that the county executive's proposal and that request by the board matched mathematically that's banded in white. Uh, things that are banded in blue means that there is a mathematical difference between the uh, Board of Education's. Uh, request and that put forward uh, into recommended budget from the county executive's office. And uh, something banded in red means that it is not included in its entirety. So the Board of Education asked for an amount. And the funding amount recommended is, is zero. Um, the far left-hand column uh, shows that at the top line. Value, the Board of Education's uh, request was for about two hundred and thirty-four point five billion. Of which this uh, county executive's recommendation uh, totals to about two hundred million. Embedded within that, but not disaggregated before you. Remember that uh, many of these projects are eligible for, or many of these line items and projects are eligible. For some monicum of state funding. Uh, we have requested about sixteen million dollars worth of state funding. Uh, to date, just slightly more than three million, uh, thirty million dollars. So of the sixty, just slightly more than thirty million. Uh, appears to be uh, coming to us by way of the conventional IAC funding. Uh, there is also a few uh, grants that were approved by the General Assembly, uh, that will be coming our way as well. Uh, then they need to be reconciled with the budget. And then finally, um. The General Assembly through the uh, passed the Built to Learn Act. Which is a funding mechanism uh, that allows the state of Maryland, through the Maryland Stadium Authority. To sell uh, MSA revenue bonds and have the proceeds of those bonds uh, of, applied towards public school construction projects. Um, that, none of that third element that I spoke to. That, none of that third element that I spoke to has been included. That is a work in progress. That is a piece of legislation that just got passed. I know the county budget office is closely tracking that. We will be communicating again with Madam Auditor and the county's budget office. As we learn more, we will share that immediately. But we would hope that that would be a mechanism by which that 30, 30-plus some odd million state number that I referenced earlier will move northward. And clearly, all of us are desirous of having additional state support for public school construction, because that lessens the pressure, the pressure here on our local resources. So going then into the specifics, health and safety, our first line item is fully funded. That's a funding program to do things like a fire alarm, public address systems, air and water quality assessments and programs, et cetera. So that's fully funded. Security related, priority two, we ask for 3.75 million. The current proposals are 750,000. There is a gap between. We believe that there is a small state grant that will be coming our way. The General Assembly and the governor did come to an agreement on a security-related grant. It's probably going to be in the, somewhere between 700 and 800,000 dollar values. So that will hopefully increase that 750,000 dollar number northward a bit. Security-related upgrades, just as a refresher, are things like those security vestibules that we have in our schools, the security cameras, security fencing, door locks, et cetera. So that's what that line funds. All-day K and pre-K additions, we're down to essentially our last four. Bambachland's already under construction. Mead Heights has yet to be bid. Sunset Elementary School has already been bid and is going out to construction. And Brockbridge Elementary School is, is out to bid as well, I believe now. So this funding will get us most of the way to completing the last four projects. We also believe that there will be some additional state funding coming our way. So in all likelihood, that 4.2 million dollar number that you see there will go up from there, because I do not believe it currently contains any state funding. Building system renovations, that is the replacement of major building elements, discrete elements like the roof, the boiler, the chiller. So there is a list of state-eligible building components that are eligible for state funding. And again, there's a slight mismatch in, in funding there. We continue to advocate for additional increases in state funding as well as additional local funding. The next line item, maintenance backlog, then is the corresponding or element to line item four. So they work together. Those building components that are not eligible for state funding, so cannot be included in line item four, are then included in line item five, maintenance backlog reduction. You see that the request was for $7 million. The funding is for 3.9 million. So things that would not be eligible are things like paint, sidewalks, door replacement projects, flooring replacement projects in schools. So the, the smaller kind of parts of the building that are not eligible for state funding. Roof replacement, so this is kind of a misnomer by name. It's both roof replacement as well as sort of roof rejuvenation. So total roof replacements are eligible for state funding, but partial roof replacements, or more importantly, the correctly timed recodings on those roofs to make sure that they last 20 or 30 years are not eligible for state funding. So this essentially helps us achieve the full life expectancy or even exceed the full life expectancy on our roofs. And again, the request was for $3 million. $2 million is recommended for funding. Relocatable classrooms, the next line item is for the relocation. We have not been in the business of buying or acquiring new. In fact, we've been decreasing the amount of relocatable classrooms. We have half today what we had, you know, a dozen years ago. So we are reducing those each and every year. We're able to do that because thankfully you and the state have been helping us put building additions on and right sizing our schools through new construction. And all of those things have helped us drive downwards the number of relocatable classes. So again, this is not acquisition of more. This is simply the relocation of existing ones to help us balance the, and load level of the building enrollments versus the state grade capacities. The next two line items are fully funded, that being asbestos abatement and barrier-free access, our ADA program. So those are fully funded. School bus replacement, there is a reduction there from the initial request of 800,000 to 260. We do ask for that 800,000 on an annualized basis. But in reality, we have buses that exceed a 12-year lifespan is the, is the state deadline for our public school buses. And so while you'll see in our program, we ask for 800,000 each and every year. We rerun that calculation, so 260 is the correct amount. We don't need the full 800,000 because we don't have that amount expiring this year. And again, we run that every year and signal that to, to the budget office and, and the audit department. School additions, we asked for 4 million. The funding amount is zero. So we are actually in the process right now of finishing up a large two-year process at Arundo High School. So we're not ready to take on the next project yet, which would be South Gate. And so we did, while it's red, red is bad, right? But we signaled to the administration that we need to focus our efforts on finishing the Arundo Middle project. We'll come back for the addition at South Gate Elementary School next year. The next four projects are fully funded, that being the replacement projects at Quarterfield and Hillsmere and Rippling Woods, and then the ground-up construction project at Old Mill West. So the board's request was fully funded for those projects, and we're moving forward on all of those. West County Elementary School, combination of design and construction. We were funded in this current year's budget FY '21, and we've begun the design, as you know. Madam Chair, you and your, and your colleagues in the council approved the acquisition of the land. The, the county council approved that land acquisition. So we are working on the design. We're working in concert with county government, Public Works and Reckon Parks on that project. This will allow us to complete the design and put that project out the bid so we can begin construction next spring. So in the early parts of calendar year 2021, the tail end of FY '22. Again, West County Elementary School, that is in the proximity of the Two Rivers, large-scale development. Old Mill Middle School South is the continuation of the Old Mills, Old Mill Middle School complex. This is for the balance of the design. And again, the early phases of construction, which is really stormwater management, forest conservation, perimeter fencing, utilities, those early elements that are required to allow construction to run successfully. The next three line items were partially funded in the county executive's recommendation versus the Board of Ed's request. Healthroom modifications, so we do have a list. We work in partnership with the school nursing division of the county department of health. As you know, you, the county, the department of health supplies the nurses, the staff our school buildings. And there are standards and requirements of those healthrooms to meet the various codes under which the school health nurse unit has to operate. They survey our healthrooms. They prioritize the needed upgrades or renovations or accoutrements or pertinences for those rooms. So that is what that line item does. School furniture funds two things. As a growing school district, we do need to acquire school furniture for that growing student body population. And then naturally, to the course of a year, a certain portion of our school furniture, either ages out, is broken, damaged beyond repair, or simply is non-serviceable anymore. So we have to replace those pieces of equipment. Upgrades of various schools or small renovations to support programmatic enhancements. So this could be something like putting walls around an open space media center so that the media center is insulated from sound in some of our open space schools. And again, that's but one example. So these are small interior renovations to support the instructional delivery system. The next line item, vehicles, was fully funded. Again, we do own, just like the county, Mr. Phipps, we own dump trucks and forklifts and backhoes and everything else. They do age out or break and need to be replaced. That's what this line item does. Aging schools is actually a state grant. The state covers 100% of the construction cost. We, the county, only have to fund our design inspection and permit fees. So there's a very small 10% or less typical county funding. The 90% or so is funded from the state. And again, this is sort of an exacting figure that grant does float up or down. So this is a best guess. Once we get the final numbers, we will work with the budget and, and Madam Auditor's office to tie that down to a hard number once we get the documentation and certify the availability of funds. Playgrounds were fully funded. I know Mr. Pruski spoke to that earlier. $300,000 is the request. The, the first two schools that would be funded through, if, and again, if that remains fully funded, would be replacement playground equipment at Ridgeway and at Jacobsville Elementary Schools. Again, Ridgway and Jacobsville. And should any funding be left over, the next school in line would be Shady Side Elementary School, which would be behind Ridgway and Jacobsville. Lastly, athletic stadium improvements, the last two line items are partially funded. So we have existing stadiums that have existing tracks and bleachers and turf fields that have to be replaced, upgraded, because they age out. And then we also have two schools left here in the county that still do not have a second turf field. So 11 of our 13 high schools now have two turf fields at them. Two schools still do not, that being North County High School and Southern High School. So this line item helps us, again, take care of our existing assets, those tracks, those bleachers, those turfs. And then hopefully, over time, allow us to finish off those last two turf field projects at those schools that still do not have it. And then finally, driveway and parking lot improvements. We have an awful lot of asphalt out there. And these, this line item does not help us maintain our existing lots. So I do want to differentiate that for you. Our maintenance backlog reduction line is where we do our potholes and all of our alligators and, and sort of aged-out decrepit parking lots. What line item 25 does is it allows us to expand and make safety improvements to our parking lots so that we can, for example, disaggregate vehicular traffic. So keep buses away from cars or make improvements to the XL, DCL lanes enter schools or to the kiss-and-ride drop-off zones for our parents and guardians. So this is actually to make improvements to our existing lots, not the maintenance and repair. So all in, again, the bottom line, as I referenced, about 234.5 million was the requested budget. About 200 million has been currently supported by the county executive. Embedded within that 200 million to date is about 30 million of state funding. We hope to make improvements on that state funding request. We will not know the results of that likely into late May. Maybe May 27th seems to ring a bell in my head. It's plus or minus that. But as soon as we get the final documents from the state, we will share those with the county. That has to do with grants and IAC funding. I personally do not believe that the Built to Learn Act funding will come in time, maybe to make this budget. I know that we, you and the county budget office want that all to happen. I'm not sure we're going to know that from the state. If we don't, we'll have to work with you and the budget office to see if we're going to be doing supplementals early into the '22 cycle or maybe waiting into the next budget cycle. But we'll, we'll tackle those. There's a lot of work, because again, that Built to Learn Act was just passed. There's a tremendous amount of work that has to take place at the state level before they can even begin to involve us here locally. And with that, Madam Chair, we would turn the floor into mic back to you and your colleagues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shagnovich. I saw two flags fly up simultaneously. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just want to touch base on those turf fields really quickly. It's been obviously a topic of conversation in District 7 for quite some time about that turf field at Southern. And it made me very nervous when you said that money is there so that over time, we can put in those turf fields. Does overtime mean in this fiscal year, or were you alluding to something different?
At, so Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer, at present, there is no money in the capital budget for the installation of either of our two remaining schools, that being North County and Southern. So by way of history, the, the first round of our turf installs was almost entirely funded by the, by the county, Councilwoman Hare. So the first 12, the wave that went through initially. Most of the second turf fields have come, most have come to us by way of grants from the state. And so no, no grant or bond bills were passed by the General Assembly this year to support a new turf install at either Southern or at North County. The only way that would happen then would either be we wait till next year or this council decides to take some action that would change that, that course. But even if the budget was fully funded, even if all $3.5 million, Ms. Hare, were, were funded, because again, you see there's a delta between the two, that would not result in the installation of that second turf field at either North County High School or at Southern High School.
What would the budget item need to be to install one or two turf fields?
Sadly, they're about a million dollars. They're pushing a million dollars a copy now because of all the environmental regulations, et cetera. And that, so essentially, that's, that's the value of the grants that we've been getting. This last, this last state cycle, we actually got grants for two schools. That was Glen Burnie and Mead High School. Glen Burnie's been, I'm sorry, scratch that. It was Arundo High School and Mead High School. Arundo has been under construction. It's nearing, nearing substantial completion. And Mead High School, we're working with the Ford to get the environmental permit to allow us to start there. So those two were funded by the state in our current FY '21 budget. But unfortunately, in the FY '22 budget, the state did not put in any, any money in for new installs. They're about a million dollars a, a copy these days sadly.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hare.
I meant to call on Ms. Fiedler. Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda, either District 5. I'm gonna go over the bus section. Could you remind me, Mr. Shagnovich, how many county-owned buses we have in our bus fleet? I know a large majority of them are through private businesses. And then my second question, I remember last, I believe it was last budget, you touched on the fact that our jurisdiction has a 12-year lifespan for buses, but there are other jurisdictions that have longer lifespans. Is that still, that difference still in existence, or has the General Assembly changed any of that?
Thank you, Alex Shagnovich. Big round numbers. We own about 60 of our own buses. And we, we track the age. We share that information. We will be, I know Madam Auditor has already asked that. We, we provide the county with an inventory, the initial purchase year, the expiration year, so you'll, you'll be getting that. But it's about 60 is a big round number. And then to your second question, yes, that, that dichotomy still exists. For the most part, most of the western shore of the state has rules that require the buses to expire after the end of their 12th year. It, it's actually 11, but you're allowed to ask for a one-year extension. We do each and every year. Why wouldn't we, right? So we ask for that extension every year. That gets us the 12. We do each and every year. Why wouldn't we, right? So we ask for that extension every year. That gets us to twelve. Uh the entire eastern shore, however, is fifteen years. So we we have been asking, many of us on the western shore have for many years been asking the General Assembly to revisit that. Um and allow the state to be uniform, right? If if fifteen is good enough for Dorchester, uh personally, it it's probably okay for Anarundel too. Uh but that would re- that would require uh the General Assembly to take action, Miss Spiebler, and then uh MSD would need to adopt that right regulations, et cetera, et cetera. But it 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 does begin in Annapolis.
Thank you. Ms. Rafian.
Um thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodman, District Six. So I'm just curious on the topic of turf fields. Has um any any discussion occurred at the board um about the um health and safety concerns of related to turf fields and the environmental impact of turf fields? Um I've seen that there are other jurisdictions um in other parts of the country that are actually starting to pull them. And I'm curious, um I'm just curious if that discussion has taken place in Anarundel County at all.
Uh Alex Chek, that's something that we we monitor uh nonstop. Uh we work closely with the with the county here. Remember that these assets are not just ours, right? They're the assets of the citizens here in Anarundel County. And we made a, we the county uh made a strategic decision back in two thousand eight uh to go ahead and put in these turf fields at all of our schools, beginning with one and then coming back with the second one at all the schools. To maximize the the amount of playability, to maximize the amount of hours and days per week that the, not just the school system, but the youth athletics, uh adult athletics, et cetera. So pulling back and eliminating the turf field, going back to grass will and and essentially cut out most of the youth and adult athletic uh leagues that that today have the benefit of playing in our stadiums and on our second turf fields out until nine or ten o'clock at night and and all weekend. Uh a a long time ago, um those uh teams were not allowed on on our Bermuda fields or on our uh stadium fields. Uh because the grass cannot take that much foot traffic. So uh there are obviously pros and cons, right? So we we as a county made a very purposeful decision back in uh two thousand and eight. Uh the state has been a partner in this every step of the way, has funded uh almost half of this hap- so about half of this project has been funded by the state and half of it's been funded by the county and county government, Wreckin Parks in particular, and us have been on this joint crusade for uh thirteen-plus years now with two schools still left. Uh removing those clearly has operational consequences that both the Board of Education and county government, and that's why I'm stressing that, because it will have significant impacts on the county government. And so uh for that reason, I don't really think it's simply a unilateral issue for the Board of Ed. It's really much of a a larger county-wide discussion involving county leadership, county department heads, as well as the Board of Ed. Ms. Rafian.
Uh thank you for your answer, Mister Secnovich.
Mister Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh Mister Secnovich, I wanna ask you about as I do every year, the Northeast Area Elementary School um Mountain Road Corridor Project. I'm curious because um one, can you update me if there's been any movement on this? But two, is this sort of a misnomer at this point considering where we're looking at putting this school in reality versus where it identifies in the budget book that it's gonna be located and sort of the name of it? Is that I don't know, is that something needs to be updated?
Um so uh two pieces, Alex Chek and the Chief Operating Officer, really, you know, two pieces to that question, right? So uh we do have uh a a, we do currently own land along Mountain Road. So in in the Mountain Road Corridor, just west of uh Jacobsville Elementary School and just east of Freetown Elementary School uh on right sandwiched between Mountain Road Route one hundred. So that is an existing uh piece of property that was part of a planned unit development from many years ago. Now, we have experienced, because of the the growth and development patterns, we have experienced very rapid accelerated growth and development along the Solly Road Marley Neck Boulevard corridor uh in and around the area to many of us known as Tanyard, Tanyard Springs, Tanyard Something. It's the old CSX lands and et cetera. Um we have been working in partnership with the county government uh to to do a land acquisition project up in that area, Mister Volkey, because we do not currently have a a land asset up there. And by we, I actually mean us and Wreckin Parks. We've been working at this in partnership because their master plan also shows a need for rec space up there. Because of the overtime and the rapid growth there, it is appearing that that construction project uh is is more needed in that Solly Marley Neck Boulevard. Uh it's more imminent or emergent than what is currently required uh at the Mountain Road Corridor uh site there along Mountain Road. We've also had a couple other things, right? The reconstruction of High Point Elementary School has increased uh greatly the capacity. And we had also put capacity additions, small additions onto um uh Jacobsville and Freetown Elementary School. And Sunset is one of the four remaining schools. That school actually uh is going through the bidding process for us to to put an addition on to. All of that is a long-winded way to say that the the capacity constraints in and around that piece of existing property that we know and own it, Mountain Road, have have near term been addressed through those additions and through the construction of High Point. We are still going to need that school there. That is still a growing area. But the part of the county that is most experiencing that rapid onslaught of of construction is that Solly and Mountain Road Corridor thing. So I know naming and nomenclature means a lot, and yes, maybe that is something that, you know, we are gonna have to to address here, Mister Volkey. Uh it is an out here project. Um the Solly Mountain Road uh project isn't isn't even a project because we don't own property up there, but I know we've been collaborating with uh the current and prior administrations to address that need up in that corridor.
Uh tha- thank you very much for that, Nathan Volkey, District Three. I guess my my point with it just is, maybe if we named it the right thing, we might be able to generate a little more support for it in those communities who otherwise look at this and go, this doesn't impact me. Clearly, you're not gonna bus students from up at the end of Marley Neck Boulevard and Solly Road all the way down to where this is proposed in the budget book. So that's the way I'm thinking about it. I just wonder if that might be something that, you know, makes us a little clearer what this project is actually doing.
Uh Alex Chek, Nova General uh School COO, yeah, absolutely. I I think again, taken under advisement, I think that is something that us and the Superintendent Board of Education would would tackle during the next development cycle hour. CIP cycle, uh while the state issues are guidelines in July and we begun, the board gets the CIP in September. Um we're also hoping that to maybe have some news on some property acquisition that also may help us, you know, better correlate the the request and our uh project plan.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District Two. Uh I would like to talk a little bit about sidewalk connectivity with all our new schools in um mostly with Old Mill, Papa John's Old Mill West that's coming in. I know the sidewalk line item in the capital budget, there's sidewalks, off-site school sidewalks and sidewalks and DPW's budget too. But I I just wanna make sure as we move along the track of getting schools built where it's clear to me that we're going to have some walkers to the new high school with that we simultaneously, whether it's the county or the school system, are making sure we're, those connections are happening via sidewalks. I think it's on page two twenty-five of but I know there's always a fun story about sidewalk dollars for off-site school sidewalks. So you can tell, if you could talk a little about that, that would be great.
For Alex, uh Chek, the Chief Operating Officer of Schools. Um so uh you you, we did not cover that today. You did not see that today because that's actually in the uh County Department of Public Works budget. Um it's not an E-class project, which is Board of Ed. Uh because all of those occur off of our school premises, so our improvements have to be on or proximate to our our school properties. We do, however, partner with the County Department of Transportation and the County Department of Public Works to do those off-site improve, off-site improvements. Um I can tell you, based on personal experience and and hopefully your experience has been the same. Um this current county administration is a, this is me, my observation, is a big proponent of increasing the walkability and the uh bike ridership potential of the citizenry here. I know that Mister Raymond Robinson has been doing walk shed studies um to look at school zones and working with uh Chris Phipps at Public Works and me and my team to expand the walkability, i.e. by putting in those sidewalk improvements and bike uh bike path improvements. And I also know that um that planning and zoning has taken on a much more active and vigorous role in ensuring that as development occurs in and around our schools, that the developers are required to install those sidewalk and bike features as part of their development projects. That was a little bit of a hit and miss in some prior years. Uh right now, it's all hit. Uh Mister Kai Ziegler and his team are working with the development community very well to put in sidewalks and bike paths. Clearly, that that's also a a lifestyle issue too, Ms. Ms. Pickard, right? I mean, the more walkable a community is, the more it can be accessed by bikes, it's also a selling point. So it's a little bit of of a win-win. That's a long way of saying, I think the focus that is being applied today here in in twenty twenty-one, I think the level of focus and the level of coordination between planning and zoning, public works, transportation, schools, it is a at a higher level today than I have seen in my two-plus decades stint here, working on on this very topic that you and I are talking about. So I applaud the county government on what they're doing. I appreciate their outreach and coordination with us, and I sincerely hope that this remains a focus area of county government.
Thank you. Uh Madam Chair, may I follow up real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
So with that um said, this is a little off-topic with capital budget, but as we plan on bringing on, bringing on this new high school and crafting the walking student potential, I I would hope that a safe walking path is part of that equation as we determine who's a walker versus a bus rider.
Alex Chek, Nova Chief Operating Officer, that is my hope too. And so let's, I mean, let's start off, let's start off from bottom, from top down, right? I mean, to begin with, safety is always our priority. Safety is paramount. That's job number one. So we absolutely want safe and appropriate walk or bike uh access to our buildings. That that's number one. The second thing is really uh, you know, being fiscally minded, right? Being fiscally minded. If we, and I mean we collective, right? Schools, county government, development community. If we can make a one-time investment in a sidewalk and forego the ongoing operating cost of a bus, that's a win-win for the taxpayers of this county, the way I see it. And the annual cost of a bus uh Ms. Pickard is is north of seventy thousand dollars a year. You can buy some serious sidewalks for seventy thousand. They are expensive, but you can buy a sidewalk for seventy thousand. And you can make that one-time investment, and for every increment of seventy thousand, you've now avoided having to pay for that bus for the next ten, twenty, thirty years of our life. I mean, it's a matter of good public policy to put in those those sidewalks. Thirdly, I talked about um life quality and lifestyle. So I think the administration, by everything I've seen, values that. We want, again, walkable communities for wellness, for accessibility, to be able to to view our neighbors and get to the public assets that we're building in a safe and appropriate way, right? And then finally, look at the documents you're approving. You before you recently has been your move-move Anarundel Plan, has been your general development plan, has been the works of your your upgrades, your planning and zoning codes. You, the you and your colleagues on this very council are focused on the very same things we're talking about, and your policy decisions are helping to drive those improvements. So again, I'm glad that we play a small part in that. There is a tremendous amount of communication we share with the county. Miss Seaman Crawford shares with the county all of our drawings. We coordinate where roads are, where sidewalks are, where curb cuts are. And but it is a partnership, right? Our bridge is building part of the way going out. We need the county to work with us and the development community to build from the out looking in so that, you know, we we meet at the right time, right place. And and that is, that work is happening every single day.
Thank you. Mister Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Pruski, District Four. Um thank you again for the capital updates. Um I just wanna commend the administration. Really, for not playing politics and going by the list, and I wanna thank the school board as well. Because there was an MGT study that directs where I should go, but this gets to the next things. When's the next MGT study? Uh and my question's gonna go even further, which I think we really need to address, particularly in western North Carolina. I don't wanna be parochial because Mister Volkey makes a good point and he knows I'm advocating for that Tanyard Springs area. I've been publicly saying that as well, and it's not about an area, it's about the kids. But one thing I do wanna ask, though, is redistricting. Um Chesapeake and Southern typically have uh low enrollments and we could add kids. I know there's been talk in the past about adding programs that would necessarily draw students there. Will this virtual program add-on help with that? And last but not least, with the MGT study, and I know this is something that I stressed also years ago, I think we also need to look not just short-term but long-term. Uh Mister Chek, you kind of pointed this out, that you work with Parks and Recs about park space. Uh and the next MGT study, we probably need to identify where land needs to be purchased for future schools and where that growth will go. We're in the midst, we just passed the GDP. Those things need to align. And I know that's a difficult conversation because me as a council member, why would I vote for a school that's not gonna be built in twenty years? It's not politically sound. But ultimately, if we wanna do what's best for the Anarundel citizens, we look at land purchases, we look twenty, thirty years from now, and actually make an investment. So I know I'm throwing you a a large piece out there, but to be curious, as we move forward, I know Old Mill is gonna have a lot of redistricting. That's not gonna solve the problem on Watch Apple Road uh or Tanyard Springs, you know what I mean? Um Crofton, obviously with Southern. So I'm just curious about where the board is at with that. And redistricting's not easy, you know, um uh when I was there, uh I actually got threatened while I was uh as the school president, if you can recall. So I I know it's it's a difficult conversation, but we have to have that, and it not only relates to our fiscal responsibility, but also making sure that we're doing what's best for the system. So uh I, again, I know I threw a lot of idea, but hopefully you could respond to that. Thank you.
Uh Alex Chek, Nova Chief Operating Officer, I'll do my best to answer all ninety-seven questions. If I forget one, let me know. Um so the the uh, what we call well, our MGT study, it's really called a strategic utilization, a facility utilization master plan. Uh we do that every ten years. And so uh then, so the current document that we have, the work was essentially done in in twenty fourteen, the beginning of twenty fifteen, the document was published in the fifteen sixteen year. That means its ten-year lifespan takes us to about the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six time zone, Mister Pruski. In order to get that document delivered by then, we really need to start that work in twenty twenty-four. So in school year twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll begin that work to be able to publish it twenty-five, twenty-six. That's that's that timeline there. Um you may or you may not be aware, so uh the state of Maryland actually is doing its own, I'm gonna call it an MGT study, but it's not MGT that's doing it, but something very similar. Um because uh many counties like us have been um kind of ahead of the curve, and we've been doing this for a while. As you know, we've been doing this actually since two thousand and four here. Uh but some of our colleagues across the state have not. So the state is actually doing one uh as as well to help guide some of its focus efforts uh more broadly across the state, not just here in Anarundel County. So we're more broadly across the state, not just here in Anarundel County. So we're participating in that. We do look at advanced land acquisition. In fact, we partner with Planning and Zoning, Reckon Parks and Us. We actually did a, we did that study and shared that. So part of our MGT study, and again, will be looked at as well, we do look at that. The county Reckon Parks Department has a master plan for where it needs assets for Reckon Parks. We routinely, Mr. Pruski, in the old days, we would use something called a leg table. So we would do our layer of mapping that showed where we needed land in the out years. Reckon Parks, now it's all digital now, and Reckon Parks does a map. We overlay those, and we try to find out, and in as many places as possible, we want to co-develop. We want to be able to have one piece of land that serves all of our needs, serves all of Reckon Parks needs. That is by far the most cost-effective and best public policy avenue. So we work collectively with already with Reckon Parks and with schools to co-locate on those properties and then work with county government to synchronize what your planning and zoning build-out estimates are and what the GDP has in terms of zoning, what the what the upgrade, you know, upzoning's gonna be, et cetera. So we already do that routinely. That is how we drive our advanced land acquisition programs in partnership with the county. It is something that we always have to reassess. So you, I hope the county will shortly, you know, you and your colleagues will surely adopt the new version of GDP. That is gonna kick that cycle all off again. So as soon as that gets adopted and is that stake has been set in dirt, terra firma, we will then spin up our process again of having that the new zoning footprint and density footprint of the county become part of our calculus when we do our next MGT study. It may not be MGT, but I'm just calling that because that's what everybody knows. And that is exactly what Reckon Parks is waiting for as well, so that they can redo their master plan. And then we will together work on that overlay document. Your last set of comments had to do with redistricting, and you are absolutely correct. That is something that we need to be very mindful of. We do have space where we don't have. So we've got utilization imbalances. And by utilization, I mean, we have some schools that are over capacity, some schools that are under capacity. The way to get yourself out of that predicament really has two approaches. One, you either build your way out of it. You build your way out of it where you have requirements that cannot be fulfilled by redistricting. But but by way of public policy in the most cost-effective way is through a district first before you build. And so that is something that the school district should be doing. I know that there is also a task force that we are a participant on. The county's actually leading it to take a look at redistricting and take a look at adequate public facility ordinance implications. The construction of the Old Mill schools that you referenced is going to probably be the largest redistricting activity that this school district has undertaken. We redistrict each and every year. We typically do. But this is gonna probably be the largest one that we've done since two thousand and three, when Broadneck was was done in all of Severna Park and and the Broadneck Peninsula, et cetera, was comprehensively redistricted. So we've done a lot of landmass. We kind of do it on a on a pinwheel. So we do that typically most each and every year, but it's in a more focused way. The Old Mill project will necessitate essentially everything north, you know, from Severna Park, Old Mill, Arundel, North County, Glen Burnie, you know, Mead, even into Chesapeake, will all potentially be impacted by that. You're right, that doesn't reach down to South County. That was looked at a number of years ago. Some opportunities were explored. Some of those were taken advantage of. Some of those were not utilized at that time. So that would be taking a look at Annapolis, Annapolis South River and Southern High School in concert again. Like I said, that was done about seven seven or eight years ago now. Some implemented, some not, but that will come due as as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnovich, and also, of course, Dr. Allato and School Board President Ms. Ellis and Miss Seaman Crawford. I know you all be reachable if we have other questions. We do have two other presentations to do this afternoon, so we are going to move on at this point. But thank you all very much for your time this afternoon and being here. We'll all be in touch with our questions. And Madam Secretary, if you please, please bring in
Thank you again.
Next panel. Thank you. Our next panel is the Anarundel Community College. And we will have Dr. Don Lindsay, Melissa Beardmore, Dr. Michael Gavin, Dr. Alicia Marshall, Dr. Richard Krav Alavich, pardon me, Dr. Felicia Patterson, and Andrew Little. Madam Secretary, when you say we have everybody, then we'll start.
Everyone should be popping onto the screen right now.
Is Dr. Lindsay presenting first? There you are. Okay. Nice to see you, Dr. Lindsay. Please take the floor. You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Members of the council, thank you for your support and interest in Anarundel Community College. Our college is the workforce engine for our county. Our mission is clear, as we work to empower our students and benefit our county by offering a high-quality, cost-efficient educational experience that is life-changing. In addition to the individuals that you mentioned, I just want to share that members from our Board of Trustees that are present, Chair Sandra Moore, Trustee Uvola, Trustee Barrow, Trustee Dr. Johnson, and our newest trustee, trustee A. Joyce Price Jones. And I wanted to thank each of them for being in attendance, but more importantly, for your dedication and commitment to our nationally recognized community college. We are a better college because of the expertise of our board. There are other colleagues that are involved in this presentation, but in consideration of time, I'm not gonna mention mention them specifically. So Anarundel Community College is an exemplary college because of our workforce. Without our faculty and staff, we would not have the national reputation for innovation and excellence that we currently enjoy. Our budget request supports our desire to attract and retain our talented workforce who are doing such great work with our students. They are dedicated, passionate, and knowledgeable, and they are experts in their field. As I start our presentation, please accept my gratitude for the work you do as members of our county council. I appreciate the relationship our college has with each of you and the important decisions you need to consider as you look at the myriad of needs throughout the county, not an easy task. We can move to slide two. You have all heard me express my pride in Anarundel Community College. We have an incredible college because of our committed workforce. There is no other college or group of colleagues I would have wanted to go through this pandemic with. Listed on this slide are just a few of the many accolades our college has been awarded. The most recent surprised even us, and that was when Forbes Magazine shared our ranking as the number one community college in the nation by academic influencers. This was the first year community colleges were included in this research, and our college, your college, is number one. Our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, and anti-racism is also recognized at the national level. Not only are we receiving awards, more importantly, we are invited to be at the table for national conversations promoting the need for this important work. We have been an achieving the dream college for over a decade. Several years ago, we gained leader status with ATD. And this summer, our college will be one of ten community colleges colleges selected nationally and the only community college in Maryland to partner with the University of Southern California Race and Equity Center. Our dedication and respect for our military and veteran personnel and students is evident, and we have won numerous awards for being military-friendly. Slide three, please. Thank you for your previous support of our new Health and Life Sciences Building, which is on schedule to open for fall of twenty twenty-one. You know our nursing program is outstanding, as evidenced by our pass rates, and we are now positioned to help the county employ even more healthcare workers. Our most recent cohort of radiology tech students obtained immediate employment as they wrapped up their studies and passed their exams in the middle of this pandemic. Slide four. As we emerge from the pandemic, our college is committed to learning from this experience and looking at COVID as an opportunity to grow. We are emerging more resilient and are poised to continue supporting our workforce and educating the students of the future. Slide five. I have joked there's no guidebook on best practices in leading a college during an international pandemic. But we did it through planning, conversation, collaboration, and partnerships. We started our work by determining our priorities, and they are listed on this slide. From the start of this national epidemic, I said, our nurse store, our first priority is safety. We have been diligent and deliberate in partnering with the county executive and the county health officer. We took direction and guidance and aligned all of our decisions with county and state regulations. We had a strategic goal to provide our students with an excellent online experience and create a robust and accessible online learning opportunity. We are proud and pleased to evidence our partnership with the county and our community by supporting a county vaccination clinic right on our campus. Slide six. Our recovery process is not created top-down, but embraces our value of shared governance. We have campus experts who participate in teams as outlined on this slide. Each of the nine teams have a specific focus for spending considerable time working to define how we will emerge from this pandemic. We will be innovative, as we know we are not gonna return to a quote-unquote new normal. Our goal is to create a new paradigm, utilizing what we have learned through this experience to emerge even more innovative and resilient as we work to meet the educational needs of our students. Slide seven. Many students have been learning remotely and accessing student support programs virtually. Since April of twenty twenty, our health programs have generally continued in person along with our police academy and a few other classes that require hands-on learning. This was about ten percent of our total face-to-face courses. Our employees are mostly teleworking as access to our buildings are still limited. For the second year, we will host a drive-through commencement affectionately known as car commencement. We have been planning our Fall Twenty-One schedule for over four months. Registration begins this week. For Fall Twenty-One, we will have more in-person classes and more in-person student services. We increased our face-to-face course offerings by ten percent, resulting in twenty percent of our seats returning to a face-to-face format for Fall Twenty-One. We will continue to release more of our traditional face-to-face classes as allowed based on state and county safety regulations. We want to offer diverse learning opportunities that include face-to-face, online, blended, and other learning modalities that meet the learning needs for all students. As I said, we will emerge resilient and take all we have learned to become the premier online community college in Maryland, maybe even in the nation. Under the leadership of Vice President Beardmore, our college has received numerous awards for our budgeting process. I would now like to turn the presentation over to Vice President Melissa Beardmore, who will provide the specifics of our fiscal year twenty twenty-two operating and capital budgets. Thank you. Melissa?
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. As the president mentioned, we're going to walk you quickly through our budget. Our request is on page one seventy-seven and one seventy-eight of the county's budget book, and as requested, we'll hit the highlights, but we're happy to take a deep dive on any issues or questions you may have. So on slide nine, just a quick update on where we are currently for the current year. We are monitoring enrollments closely, and in this pandemic, in this environment, and primarily that this remote environment, we are focused on student success and helping our students meet their goals. Our enrollment patterns really defy modeling right now after a strong summer last year. We are tracking well towards our conservative student enrollment targets. Like the county and many many other organizations, we put significant spending contingencies in place last year, even before this current fiscal year started. And as a result of that very conservative approach, we have a balanced budget for this current fiscal year. And our our fund balance is projected to be within our board policy of five to ten percent of our total budget. While the college is still in recovery mode, there are still many uncertainties, like the county, that we are dealing with, and we continue to align our work and our budgets within our strategic plan. As the president mentioned, we know a bit more than we did this time last year, but there is no roadmap for us to follow. On the next slide, we have been taught by our own internal strategic communications folks not to bury the headline. So here it is. On the operating budget, this is our headline, our respectful ask of the county council. We are appreciative and tremendously supportive of the county executive's budget, and we respectfully request that the council maintain the county executive's budget. On the next slide, on slide eleven, this is, I guess, what I'll call our disclaimer slide. In the in the spirit of full transparency, this is certainly what keeps me and my team up at night. We we are pleased, and you'll see a little bit more information shortly, that we received additional funding that was provided by the state after the board approved our budget. It's still level funding versus the original budget in fiscal twenty-one, and we live under the possibility that we could see another rescission like we did just this past July. We're very pleased at the federal stimulus funding that higher education has received, but those are one-time funds and not part of our operating funding. As mentioned previously, these are certainly uncertain times for our community, and enrollment patterns are difficult to predict. And like other industries, competition is tough for attracting and retaining talented faculty and staff. We do have a strategic priority to be a premier online educator in Maryland, which is an ambitious goal that we know will will serve our community. So with that context, like to move to slide twelve. Thank you. The highlights of our budget, we are pleased that we received one million dollars in new funding in the county executive's budget. We recognize and appreciate that the county has been a very reliable operating funding partner for us. With a strategic priority of affordability, our board considers every single tuition increase very seriously. And for the first time in many years, there is no tuition rate increase for county residents. Our board noted the financial challenges that county residents are facing, and we built a budget around no in-county tuition rate increase. We're pleased that our budget this year will allow us to provide a much-deserved increase to our faculty and staff, and and I think we've talked about this in previous conversations with the council. We we call it a pool because it's a pool of funds that is implemented for an individual employee based on our compensation plan, and we'll share some highlights of that plan in the subsequent slide. All right, so on slide fourteen, we'd like to just talk a little bit about our revenues. This is a chart showing the transition of the revenue side of our budget from what our board approved, which seems like a lifetime ago, at the end of February. That's that second column of numbers there. Wanted to share with you, in the spirit of full disclosure, the changes made on the revenue side by the administration. After our board approved our budget, the Maryland General Assembly approved additional state funding of about two point seven million dollars beyond our board-approved budget. We have requested a four-million-dollar increase from the county, and the county executive's budget took those additional state funds and used them to fund the four-million-dollar requested from the county. So overall, changes our revenue budget very minimally. You see from those little highlighted boxes there in in yellow, just shifts the funding sources between the state and county. The next slide, a slide we we show you frequently, as you heard from Mr. Trumpauer in his remarks this Friday, that referring to our three-legged funding stool, that really, if it's divided equal, should be thirty-three percent each, not been the case for four years. Should the county fund our request? You see, the county would be, or county council, keep our funding intact. The county would be contributing forty percent of our budget. Next, we'll take a little bit of a deep dive on our expenditures. Slide seventeen shows the summary of the allocation of changes and expenditures within this budget. Overall, budget to budget, it's a very moderate increase in fiscal twenty-two, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and we'll provide on the next slide the details of what's changing. Slide eighteen, we shows the reductions. We Slide 18, we shows the reductions. We don't just roll a budget over from year to year. We are very thoughtful about looking at one-time items that we don't need to continue funding. We delete those. We also look at data, things that may have changed. The big item, pardon me. The big item in the reductions, as you see from this slide, is savings and unemployment costs. Versus last year, we received assistance from the state using stimulus money, so we've adjusted our unemployment expenditure estimates there. The other large item relates to a recommendation from an administrative services review we conducted in the last year to assess our efficiencies and activities inside and outside, sorry, outside of the classroom. And we implemented one recommendation to eliminate the many vacancies that we were carrying and managing. And you'll see in a future slide, we have an almost measured offset in turnover in that subsequent slide. So slide 19. More than 80% of our budget is in salaries and benefits. And as I spoke to previously, attracting and retaining a diverse and quality faculty and staff is a strategic priority for the college. Compensation is one tool in accomplishing that goal. After several years with minimal or sometimes no pay increases for the college, we budgeted the equivalent of a 5% pool for our faculty and staff. And you may recall, we have what we call, several years ago, we implemented a market-based pay system. We have to maintain that system each year to keep pace with the increasing labor market. And we're pleased that the county executive's budget supports our compensation system. We are also, we know we have council members who are interested in our adjunct, our part-time faculty pay. We are implementing increases for our adjunct faculty to stay competitive. And in total, these compensation adjustments stood a little over $4.3 million. The next slide, slide 20, just a quick reminder that we have assessed and updated our compensation practices, working through our college shared governance process. We had a committee for faculty, a separate committee for staff, and we updated our, to a market-based system for both staff and faculty with greater equity, transparency, and also dealt with compression. And in my favorite, also fiscally sustainable. The next chart is an update we provided to you last year, writing it this year, just to track comparatively speaking, how we've compared to other county entities. And at some point, unfortunately, how we have lagged. We were extremely appreciative of the council and administration's support of our request for this current fiscal year for parity in funding our participation in those $1,500 one-time payments for our employees. Just a reminder, our staff compensation system, I hit this on a previous slide. Overall, this system uses regional market data, kind of a cool system, to provide how much the market is moving for each staff position as a percentage. And we then update our salary tables based on that data. Employees move across the table as they get another year of service. So at the end of the day, we have budgeted using that system a 5% pool. Slightly lags what we saw the market rate change, but we can catch up with that 0.5% in the next year. Base adjustments are kind of our catch-all category we use for increased costs associated with existing services. The largest item here relates to what I talked about previously, where we eliminated a bunch of vacancies that kind of a cleanup exercise through administrative services review. This is the offset, that turnover adjustment, you know, that $1.4 million offset. And helps us to kind of clean up our vacancies and our resets our turnover budget. On slide 24, we did receive some federal stimulus funding under the CARES Act to provide one-time implementation funding for critical systems. Onerlock is an online test fracturing system. We also implemented chatbot. So this budget funds the ongoing service agreements for these systems, which support our strategic priority in support of being a premier online institution. So we were very strategic in how we implemented that CARES, one-time CARES Act funding to propel the college forward using technology to make ourselves more efficient and serve our students more effectively. So as a recap on slide 25, everything I just talked about in summary format. And then on slide 26, just a cut and paste from your budget book. Sorry, it's been read. That's kind of aggressive. But on page 178, a recap of our total budget. Revenues and expenditures also shows a line item for auxiliary enterprise and restricted funds. The county council provides us with a total appropriation authority, that's $49 million, I believe. If we're, if we're going to spend a dollar more there, we have to come back to you for appropriation authority. Generally, that line item represents our contract training, dining services, bookstore activity where we charge a fee equivalent to cover the cost of service. Also includes our restricted funds. Those are grants, federal financial aid, and other funds restricted to our particular purpose. So overall, you see the college's $169 million total all-in budget exclusive of capital. Which is our next few slides. So on slide 28, this summarizes our total capital request to the county. The president mentioned our number one priority was the health science and health and life sciences building. It will open in August of 2021. And we tremendously appreciate the county's support and what it will be a transformational building to house our health, science, and biology programs. We're very pleased that the county continues to fund our out-year priorities on lines three and four, the dragon building renovation in Florastano. And we are currently updating our facilities master plan that was just released in 2016. We expect to finalize that plan over the summer and may change the nature of the out-year projects, how we might use the Florastano space, and will reflect projections for online enrollment and impact on our space. Again, we have a goal to become more efficient with our space, which could include recommendations to retire some inefficient buildings as our physical footprint could become smaller and we are more flexible with the uses of our space, which also not just instructional space, but also office space. And on the next slide, so that was our request to the county executive. This is just a quick summary of the, some of the adjustments. Unfortunately, the administration did not fund our IT capital project. That project provides funds for infrastructure investments and things like switches and fiber. We asked and the county added back funding last year. And unfortunately, again, this year fiscal 22, it was cut. So we'll, we do have a request. We'll get to that in just a second. In the out-year projects, in the bottom of this slide, we have, I mentioned, our two priorities are funded. They were adjusted, we think perhaps maybe due to some inadvertent errors. And we will work with county auditor and the budget office to track down those adjustments to see if there are corrections that need to be made. And again, as I mentioned, we saw the out-year reduction, not just in 22, but in the out-years on that IT project. Which brings me to the last, last ask of the council, which is on the next slide. And our ask is to restore 1.4 million in our capital budget for fiscal 22 for that information technology project. And if you can find the money to fund the project in the out-years, it just makes it easier for us to plan if we know the out-year project is funded. So I know I went very quickly. Lastly, just a fun little picture of our health and life sciences building. I mentioned, we are very grateful for the county's support of this transformational building, as the president mentioned. On schedule, within budget, scheduled to open on time in August. It's on track for lead gold. And we are very excited to share this building with our students. Lastly, if I can just have one second, we are also underway to build the Clausen Center for Innovation and Skilled Trades. And would just like to take a moment to thank the county folks in inspection and permits, Steve Kaisigler, Mark Wiedemeyer, and their teams for their support in helping us with the appropriate permits for this very important project that will provide training in the building and skilled trade area. So thank you very much.
And I think it's important that we add that that building is totally being done through donations and philanthropy. So it's totally being supported by donors.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Ms. Rodman. You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodman, District Six. So one of the early slides, you mentioned adjunct faculty savings. And then later, you mentioned a 5% adjunct increase. So I'm just curious about how you get savings and an increase at the same time. Are you moving, hopefully that means you're moving more adjunct faculty to, I don't know if it's called tenure track in the community college world, but tenure track positions. I'm hoping that's the answer.
It's a little of that. There's probably three answers for that. And I know we have Dr. Marshall here as well. I'll take a stab at it. She'll correct me. If I, and Dr. Gavin, if there's anything to add. So we absolutely have adjunct faculty who interview for full-time faculty positions. And over the past few years have hired several very talented adjunct faculty into the full-time ranks. So that's one answer. Secondly, we see savings because, overall, in the adjunct budget, because our enrollments have right size over the past few years. And where we have the ability to flex in terms of how many classes we offer, we have less demand. Sometimes we may offer fewer classes. So adjunct faculty, part-time faculty allow us to scale up. We increase adjunct faculty and the budget would increase when we have increased enrollment, like we had during the recession 2009, 2010. So that's savings overall in the adjunct budget. However, those adjunct folks that are teaching our classes are being paid, and this budget will allow us to pay them more per class. So individually, adjunct who are teaching, this budget allows for increases across the rates and adds a third tier, if you will, we call it lecturer three rate, for them to progress. So it gives them a little bit more career progression as they meet certain qualifications, become more qualified. So they have the opportunity to earn more money as individual faculty.
Madam Chair, can I follow up briefly?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Gunn Lisa Rodman, District Six. So I'm curious, what is, what is the range of the adjunct pay per class? And am I correct that the limit is five classes per semester?
I can, I can jump in and speak to that. So right now, the higher rate is 931 for adjunct faculty. But again, we have multiple rates. So we have a lecture one, a lecture two, and a lecturer three that we're actually implementing today. So that's going to be an additional, I think it's 3% differential with that. And then we also do have a limit to the number of FLH or credit hours that we can assign adjunct faculty. So to your point, it doesn't, there's not a number of classes. It depends on the FLH. And we do not go above a certain, a certain amount of FLH that one adjunct faculty member can be assigned. And it's usually 12 to 15. If you get to 15, then we have to go into another category for adjunct faculty.
Dr. Marshall, this is the chair. Would you mind identifying yourself for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Dr. Alicia Marshall. I am interim vice president for learning.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I follow up again?
Yes, but that's your last follow-up until next.
All right, so I just, it's really a clarifying. So you said 931. What is that, per class, per credit hour? And before you answer, what is the, have you, has anyone done any sort of assessment in terms of like what hours are actually worked for, you know, per credit hour, per class? I'm just still very concerned about exploitation of adjunct professors. And so I would love to know what you're doing to make sure that that's not happening.
Yes, we do have a limit to the number of FLH that can be assigned for an adjunct faculty member. I would say on average, most adjunct faculty members teach one or two classes a semester. But it does vary based on the need and also their desire to teach more FLH.
So I'm sorry, those weren't my questions.
This is Mike Gavin, Vice President of Learning, too. I could jump in really quick. So there's two pieces of information that could be helpful to that. One is that for every credit hour an adjunct is in the class, we are assuming that they're working 2.5 hours outside of the class for class preparation. And the limitation that we have for how many credit hours they're allowed to teach is based on the ACA restrictions of how many, how many hours we're allowed to have a faculty member teach without being considered full-time.
I'll wait my turning ask again because I feel like my question is not answered.
Okay, Ms. Fiebler, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiebler, District Five. First, I want to say, we, my boys play flag football on your campus. So it has been exciting to see the health and life sciences building go up. So we're very excited to see the cars parked and students and faculty inside. So just a quick question on your one ask, and I appreciate the earlier call this week. For the information technology, out-years, 4.9 million. Is, what is that? Is that in perpetuity or for a certain amount of years? I mean, I know we, I know it's six-year capital improvement project, but what long-term are you thinking?
Melissa Beardmore. Sorry, I just needed to pull up a slide here. So what we've done is we've done a multi-year information technology infrastructure plan and operationally planned out what investments we need to make by year. So we have budgeted in fiscal 22, the 1.4 million, that's our ask for that year. And then in fiscal 23, we have just under 3 million. And 24, a million fifty. And then 400,000 and 500,000 in 25 and 26. So we tried to align our thinking in terms of what needs to happen when, when we have the resources to complete the work. Because for us, we have to be very thoughtful about having the folks who can implement those investments. So that's why it's kind of lumpy funding throughout the years, but we've tried to align when we can do the work and made our funding request appropriately. Be happy to provide you those details. They were in our request as a county executive, but we'd be happy to send that as a follow-up.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Yeah, I echo the sentiments of everybody else. Thank you for the very nice presentation and putting that together. One of the things that I'd heard in the presentation was that the community college is leading in topics like anti-racism, systemic racism, and equity and inclusion. So I wanted to get, if I could, a better understanding of what exactly the community college is doing in those areas and what the community college is spending when it comes to those topics and those programs.
Dr. Lindsay, do you want to take that one? She's having trouble hearing.
I'm sorry, there I am. Okay, I was just having to get unmuted here. I was actually going to ask Dr. Gavin to talk specifically about the programs that are happening in learning because they're very innovative, things like a model course program. We've got a mentoring program. Dr. Marshall's been responsible for bringing forward a new program specifically designed for people of color looking at leadership opportunities. But Dr. Gavin, do you want to speak specifically to some of the activities that faculty are involved in that have really evidenced great work with the, with completion rates?
Sure. So I think the first thing to say is that we see it as part of our mission to ensure that every student that comes to our campus can succeed. And because of some inequities that exist prior to them coming, we need to pivot our college to be ready for all students. That requires some changing and thinking as well as how we teach. And we have probably a little successful program we've had. It's called a program, is a model course program where we have faculty learn how to be inclusively teaching towards students. And we've, through that program, been able to ensure that students are succeeding at the same rates in many of our most highly enrolled courses. That costs us a minimal amount of money. We basically take, we basically have released full-time faculty from one of the courses that they're required to teach a semester. And it's a train-the-trainer model, so it probably costs us somewhere around $10,000 a year to ensure that all students are graduate, or excuse me, succeeding in those courses at the same rate. And then on top of that, we've had success with regard to their graduation rates. So that African-American students are graduating at 5% higher rate since we started this work. And Hispanic students are graduating at a 10% higher rate. We also have ensured that we are working. We also have ensured that we are working towards hiring both faculty and staff at a higher rate to reflect the county demographics, and have increased our faculty diversity by 6% as a result of some of the work we've done with hiring and recruitment revision processes. And then Dr. Marshall has implemented a retention of faculty and administrators of color initiative that's to begin next year. I could talk for quite a while longer, but I'm not sure. Those are probably the highlights of the work that we've been doing, and that have also led to our national recognition for that work.
And I think the other thing that's important, Dr. Patterson's on the line as well. I mean, this is systemic work, this isn't like a, here's the program, you know, go do this and you're done. This is infused throughout the entire student experience. So, Dr. Patterson, can you talk about some of the wraparound services and special programs that you've led in your division?
Probably the most significant program we have is our Student Achievement and Success Program that consistently works primarily with students of color, low-income students, working on diversity and equity issues, and have probably, at least for the time I've been at the college the last 10, 12 years, have consistently seen higher retention levels than other programs at the college. So we work kind of like a case management approach to working with students. So students are met with individually to get, address their needs. We also have a program that we call HelpLink. Probably some of you may have contributed actually to that program. We do have it funded by donors, and that is specifically designed for equity as well to address issues that students might be having where they're not able to meet their needs financially. We might help them with textbook or some other particular area of need that they have.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, thank you. May I just briefly follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I appreciate those responses, and thank you all for each of you adding a piece to that. What it sounded like I was hearing, and I want to make sure I understand correctly, is when we use the term systemic racism and equity and inclusion, what you're sort of talking about are some of these achievement-oriented programs to ensure that your students are, you know, having the equal opportunity, if you will, to try to bring them up and help them with that. One of the terms that was used was the anti-racism term, and so I guess I was just curious if there were any particular programs about that in addition to what we talked about on systemic racism and equity and inclusion beyond just the service component? If there was anything in the educational curriculum or the classes that are being offered, or anything like that? If that was another piece of it?
Well, I'll take a stab at this in case somebody else wants to jump in, too. But I mean, really, the work of being anti-racist and doing anti-racist work is actively addressing and bringing issues forward that you can identify. So for instance, years ago, we talked about the amazing retention rates that we have with our students. But when we disaggregated the data, it was clear that our Black and Hispanic students were not doing as well. And this is data we've been working on, it's probably about six years old by now. But the goal was that we felt that all of our students that are trusting their education with us should be able to succeed and attain whatever goal it is that they came forward to. So we've got, it's actually very individualized work. I mean, we've got faculty, we've got our student support services. Through Melissa's area, we've got human resources and training opportunities. So it's really infused in every aspect, in every division, in every department of our college. Everybody has a piece of this and a part of it. And we've tied this in obviously into the completion and our, you know, our moral and our ethical obligation to make sure that the students that come to us can complete what they came for. It's very active work.
Can I add to that? So a lot of the work we've been doing in terms of, I'm sorry, Dr. Volkey Marshall, I'm the interim vice president for learning at Anarondale County College.
And we were just hearing from Dr. Lindsay, so I just, I just want to remind everyone to please state.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't do it either.
That's okay, please go ahead, Dr. Marshall.
Sorry, I just wanted to add to that. A lot of the work we've been doing in terms of the curriculum, because I think you asked about that, is very intentional. So we have an Educational Policies and Curriculum Committee that reviews any new curriculum that comes through the college. And part of that process is an intentional review of how courses and programs actually integrate diversity, equity, and inclusion into their curriculum. So we work with faculty to think about bringing different voices into the classroom, looking at their sources, looking at how they're approaching the populations of students, or if it's a health course, it could be patients and different populations, different diseases. So we really are becoming more intentional. That is a mandatory part of the curriculum review process now.
This is Dr. Lindsay, I also just want to promote and share with people that know it's the rising tide lifts all boats. The work that we're doing is beneficial to every one of our students.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District Six. I just really, I'm trying to get a little bit of clarity here. Ms. Marshall, I believe that you said the high end of the rate was 931, but I didn't hear that was 931, per what? And then my second question was, has there been any actual analysis? You know, I know you said you assume 2.5 hours for out-of-class time for every hour in-class time, but has there been any actual analysis to determine that that is reflective of what happens in reality? I'm being honest, I've heard stories from adjunct professors that feel like they are working far more than their pay reflects. And I, you know, as a county official who's looking at your budget, I want to make sure that we are treating our county employees appropriately.
So I'll start, Dr. Lisa Marshall, interim vice president for learning. So to clarify, it is 931 per FLH or per credit hour that adjunct faculty will pay at the lecturer two rate. As Vice President Beardmore mentioned, we are implementing a lecturer three rate, and that will be a higher tier rate. So to your point, adjunct faculty will be able to apply and get paid a higher rate for the work that they're doing, and so that should help with some of it. And then we also have the 5% adjunct pool as well. I'm not going to speak to the analysis, I don't know if someone else has something to say about that piece, but I do think that we are looking at the actual work piece. And I think as we transition to online environment, a lot of our faculty are working a lot harder, so we have to take a look at those issues as well.
This is Mike Gavin, the Vice President of Learning as well. And the 2.5 hours is from federal guidance that was done from analysis when the ACA regulations came out, and it was done based on analysis nationally on how much people, faculty, full-time and adjuncts, were working outside of class. So we follow federal guidance based on those regulations.
Ms. Rodvian, did you have another question, or again?
Just, I'm sorry, one final question. How many hours of in-class time is typical for each, is it per credit hour? What is it, you know, can you assume a three-credit class has three in-class hours, and then whatever the corresponding out-of-class? I see nodding heads, so I'll just take that a yes and run with it, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for our very distinguished panel? Seeing none, I'll just congratulate, congratulate you all again on your number-one ranking. That was really awesome to see, very exciting, and we appreciate all the work you do. And thank you for your time this afternoon, and for waiting your turn so patiently.
Yeah, thank you so much for all that you do, Dawn Lindsay. I just wanted to, it's been a pleasure working with everybody. We've reached out to a couple of you already. We have appointments, I think, scheduled with everybody else. Melissa and I'll be following up, just to make sure that we can answer any and all of your questions as we move forward in this process.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon or evening. Madam Secretary, I believe we have one presentation left, and that is our dear, dear friend, Mr. Skip Ald with Anarondale County Public Libraries. Good afternoon, Mr. Ald.
Hi there. I think I should say good evening at this point, shouldn't I?
It's 4:59, we're almost there.
Well, that's great, okay, 4:50, I have one minute.
And I don't have a list of who else you have with you, but if you would kindly introduce them all, that would be great.
Okay, I sure will, thank you, thank you, Chair Lacy. So are you guys ready to get going, ready right now?
We are ready.
Okay. I did, I tried to estimate when I thought I would start, and I was thinking probably maybe 2/3. And so anyway, it's a little, a little off on my estimate, so. Let's see, Ms. Corby is going to be, it's going to, Ms. Corby is going to be running my slideshow, so I'm gonna, there we go, I've got that. And I'm going to take a good bit of time on this first slide, because I want to just do some introductions and things. So let me get started. Hello, Council Chair Lacy, Vice Chair Rodvian, and Councilperson Siedler, Hare, Pickard, Pruski, and Volkey. I really do appreciate your time today, especially after such a long afternoon. I'm coming to you from Hamburg, New York, just outside of Buffalo, New York. I'm here with my wife, and we got to have lunch today while you were meeting with the Board of Ed, with her 99-year-old father and one of her sisters from Ohio. So it's really good to be able to interrupt my vacation to come to you today. First, I want to introduce you to my executive leadership team. I think most of us are here, Kathy Hollerbeck had an appointment she had to go to, but let me just start, and as I call your name, go ahead and wave, but Cedric Grant is our new Chief Financial Officer. He joined us in December and has extensive experience in higher education, Maryland State Government, and most recently, Project Place in Baltimore. Kathleen Sparrow is the new Executive Director of the Anarondale County Public Library Foundation. She started just two weeks before Cedric, and comes to us from executive leadership positions with Parks and Recreation, Hospital Administration, and Philanthropy, the Girl Scouts of Utah, and most recently, as the Chief Development Officer for Volunteers of America, Utah. Kovan Roundtree is our Chief of Human Resources. He started with us just about a month before the pandemic, so you can imagine his trial by fire this past year. Kovan served for five years in a similar position with Prince George's County Library System. He's been in human resources for over two decades in the private, nonprofit, and public sectors. Like I said, Kathy Hollerback is not able to be with us right now, but she is Chief of Public Services and Branch Management. Kathy also served as Regional Manager of several libraries with Prince George's County Libraries before we stole her back in 2016. She has over 30 years of experience with Anarondale County Public Library. Her current position oversees our entire public-facing operation, including virtual services, programming and outreach, and all 16 branch libraries. Rudy Rodella is Chief of Support Services with oversight of facilities and capital projects, maintenance and delivery, materials management, and information technology. Rudy worked in various positions in libraries in Texas, Illinois, and Virginia before coming to Anarondale in 2015. Prior to that, he had a 20-year career with the United States Marine Corps. Christine Feldman is our Marketing and Communications Manager. Prior to joining AACPL, she worked nearly two decades with William Donald Schaefer as Deputy Director of Communications when he was comptroller, and even before, and then with Peter Francho before joining AACPL in 2014. I want to thank all of you for the strong support of libraries that you've given us the past two years. From the funding of discoveries, to increasing the materials budget, to bringing our Glenn Burney and Millersville Libraries into the capital program, you have been a tremendously important partner as we work to improve our library system. You are moving us toward completing the early years of a library renaissance that began about seven or eight years ago, and that's taking root with the current council and administration. So thank you for enabling the rebirth of libraries and library services programs and resources throughout our county. Like, like all organizations, Anarondale County Public Library faces challenges. Today, we want to present you with solutions that you can help us with. This is the 100th year of service for the people of our county, and with 16 libraries, 263 full-time, and 140 part-time staff, and a great collection of print, audiovisual, and digital resources, we provide a robust array of services and programs. Over the past year, we reinvented our public libraries several times. Many of our new ways of doing business will carry forward forever, just as we anticipate bringing back services that we had to put on hiatus this past year. The Maryland Live Local Development Council has been important to the development of our library system. We hope that you will support their recommendation and the county executives for a mobile library for underserved communities. In many ways, the LDC funds are a harbinger of the future of our library system, and I'll speak to that at the end of my presentation. Ms. Corby, hang on on the movement through these slides, I'm not quite at slide two yet. Okay, we switched to online service on March 13th last year. This is the timeline slide that I'm on now. I'll be going through all the other slides really quickly, starting in just a moment. So we switched to online service on March 13th, purchasing lots more eBooks and doing virtual storytimes and other virtual programs the very next week. I'm extremely proud of our library system and our staff because we continued to provide service throughout the pandemic. By June 1st, we brought all staff back into the buildings with about 80% in-person at the libraries or headquarters, and 10% to 20% teleworking. We created and opened curbside service starting on June 8th, and we've alternated between in-person appointments and being fully open throughout the course of the year. Three weeks ago, on April 12th, we reopened our libraries, thank God. We expect to open our meeting rooms and in-person programs by late summer or fall. Next slide, please. Among many innovations, the one that we believe will have the greatest impact on the future of all Anarondale County residents is the elimination of overdue fines. That happened this year and is built into our budget from now on. Next slide, I want to move now to our supplemental budget requests. We appreciate that the county executive has proposed funding several of our requests, which are listed here. I'll discuss these in greater detail in the following slides. While you don't see our position requests until midway through our 15 supplemental priorities, the four positions that we're asking for may be the most important to the long-term health and stability of our operations. Next slide. In 2018, a major malware attack led us to stopgap measures for which we need permanent funding. And therefore, we are asking $21,375 to bolster and strengthen our cybersecurity program. Next slide. Just like the county, excuse me a moment, yes. Okay, just like the county, we have a major need to review our classification and compensation with the goal next year to bring our employees to market. We are asking $50,000 for the study that we're currently planning. I also want to ask you for your support of the county executive's proposal for merit and COLO raises for non-represented employees. Our staff and materials are what I call the heart and soul of our library system. Library staff deserve every penny of the proposed raises. Next slide. When the library signed a lease a few years ago with the county, we took over several maintenance programs without funding. We need $103,600 to be able to take care of the buildings that we lease for functions that the county no longer supports. Next slide. Digital and virtual library services have come front and center this year. We cannot continue to provide the level of services that our customers expect without the $20,573 for software. Next slide. As I said before, we need four positions. Two of these will ensure digital success. These are a media and technology assistant, and the social media manager position that we've asked for in past years. The cost for these two positions is $162,720, and the county executive has proposed funding the first one at half the cost, half that total cost. Next slide. For several years now, we have been trying to increase our materials budget, ideally to be in line with the best library systems in Maryland. We will get to six million dollars over the next few years. Both County Executive Shu and County Executive Pittman have understood the importance of increasing our baseline materials budget, which currently stands at four-point-two-five million dollars. We appreciate the one-time funding of an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that Mr. Pittman has proposed for this year. Next slide. There are additional supplemental requests that will be important to help us moving out of the pandemic and into the new era of library services that your constituents would like to see. Keep in mind our standing with respect to our neighbors in central Maryland. Fiscal year two thousand nineteen is the latest for which we have comparable per capita funding statistics. In that year, while Anarundel residents had a library system funded at forty-seven dollars and three cents per capita, Calvert residents had fifty-four dollars eleven cents, Carroll had sixty-four eighty-seven, Howard had seventy-five fifty-eight, and Hartford residents had eighty-one dollars and fifteen cents. I'll discuss these needs in the next few slides, and then I'll be ready for your questions. Uh, next slide. Our Board of Trustees decided, a couple months back, to go back to the system that we had in place until roughly nine or ten years ago, which is to offer meeting rooms without charging for-profit organizations. We, of course, brought in no meeting room fees this past year, and going forward, we want especially to focus on library and partner organizations as well as community groups and other nonprofits. We used to budget twenty thousand dollars in revenues. Next slide. As I said before, while we really appreciate the county executive proposing the funding of the media and technology assistant, we've been seeking funding for social media manager for several years. Next slide. Based on our current level of activities and behind-the-scenes operations, and the vast amount of materials coming in and moving through our delivery service, we need a full-time materials-receiving clerk. The cost is sixty-two thousand nine ninety-two. Next slide. Excuse me a moment. Okay. Uh, we are more and more focused on data-driven decision-making. We need a business intelligence analyst, another position that we've requested for a few years. Why is this so important to us? First of all, it's been great to have Rudy Rodella working closely with Elizabeth Funch in the county, uh, Executive's Office. But Rudy's responsibilities are vast and varied, and we need someone to analyze data and to develop clarifying and insightful representations of data so that we can implement effective and cost-efficient strategies to advance services and meet the needs of everyone, especially those most in need. The cost of this position is one-hundred-twelve thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. Next slide, please. The Budget Office has increased, um, turnover from five-hundred-thousand dollars to seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars for the library system. Uh, in recent years, we have had many unfilled positions for various reasons. At this time, we are fully staffed, minus about two or three positions, uh, that we're hiring for. Because of this full staffing situation that we're in now, I will almost certainly have to ask the administration in the fourth quarter to make the library whole if we are unable to make this turnover. Next slide. We are absolutely thrilled to see funding in County Executive's Capital Improvement Plan, proposal, for both Glenn Burney and Millersville Libraries. These projects will complete our current facilities master plan and the first phase of the renaissance of our library system. Think back to the beginning of my presentation, when I talked about how the LDC funding is a harbinger of the future of our library system. After completing the Millersville Library, we expect to begin major renovations of all our old libraries to make them great libraries like the renovated Severn Branch. Uh, you may recall that we received one-point-two-million dollars from the Local Development Council to do a renovation of the Severn Branch Library. We still have some exterior work to do, but, uh, when you get a chance, you should go visit Severn. We also expect to expand our mobile library outreach program. Again, this is funding in this year's County Executive-proposed budget for use of LDC funding, which is one-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars for the vehicle and upfitting of a mobile outreach library. So, we do appreciate your valuable support as we take this journey together. Next slide. So I'm gonna let you take a look at these, I know you have the presentation, uh, at your computers as well, but our, our customers have told us that they love what we have been doing throughout the pandemic. And so what you're seeing here are just a few of the comments that we receive on a daily basis. Um, I know, we keep, uh, a, what we call a customer impact log, and I have a, a file in my computer of several hundred comments of people, and I know I've spoken to several of you over the course of the year, because not everybody has been happy with every decision we've made, but we have had so many people so delighted by what we have been able to do, and frankly, um, I'm quite proud that we've been able to do, um, things both for our staff, to protect our staff, protect the health and safety of our staff, but also for our public, for our customers, for our community. Um, we have, um, I think people come from other counties to use our library system because of the level of being open that we are. So the last slide is simply a slide where I, I say, we are ready for questions. And that would be me, as well as my team, so, um, thank you so much for your attention, and at the end of a long day, I tried to move quickly through that, and ready for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ald, and, uh, whether it's you or someone else from your team who are answering questions, please remember to, um, identify yourself when you're speaking, uh, during one question answer. Mr. Pruski is first one up.
Councilman Pruski, District Four, first of all, Skip, thank you again. I know that, uh, there's a lot of residents throughout Anarundel County that utilize your services, and, uh, we appreciate, uh, you know, everything that you're doing. A- and just real quick, uh, just for some, um, background, as a former Western New York resident, you should probably go to Duff's for Buffalo Wings. If you don't go there, I'm gonna be very sad because that's the best place in the entire country. I'm a little biased, but, uh, I would highly recommend it. It's about thirty-five minutes' drive from where you're at. Um, but I, I did have something that I did wanna, um, uh, share with you. So, in the budget is a proposed park, uh, in Odenton. It's been requested for years, uh, part of it is because there were so many townhomes built uh, around the Odenton Library, and nothing was added. No parks, no schools, no quality-of-life instruments, and this is the first time that, I wanna thank the county executive for introducing it. But I, I see this sometimes, and this is not anyone's fault, right, agency, but we're in silos, right? So we build a school and it doesn't have athletic fields. Uh, we build a fire station, why not build a police station right next to it, right? So combining, uh, uh, services. So I mentioned that to you because that park is being proposed, there's a master plan, there'll be a study. I think you need to be at the table with your staff, because if you're offering, um, you know, services for the library, uh, you should be coordinating with that park right next door. Uh, I know you do often outside activities, you have bands come, you know, maybe a part of that park is an amphitheater that the library use. I, I just see this too often with government, and again, it's not anybody's fault, but I hope, and somebody from the administration is listening, uh, again, that somebody from your staff involved with capital projects or programming, uh, serves on the committee, and we can coordinate those activities, because I see a lot of things, um, in other areas, uh, and I know activities are difficult, but particularly in the West and North County area. Uh, when I opened the Parks and Recs magazine, not necessarily the library, you're pretty good at this, but I, I don't see much in West County, right? It's, you gotta go to Annapolis, you gotta drive here. So I'd like to see some of those services spread out more, uh, from that, and I think the library is a great resource, especially if we have the park. So, just a comment, I hope that, that you guys can coordinate, uh, uh, with the administration to make sure, um, that we can combine some services, uh, for those residents that are, thank you.
Um, thank you, Councilman, uh, Pruski. Uh, we, Carol Kayson is the manager of the Odenton Library, and I'm fairly certain she has been at several meetings this past year as this park has been discussed. Um, the idea of an amphitheater is great. Frankly, I wish it was in place now, or this whole past year, because, I mean, just think of the programming we could have done outside. I know our Discovery's Library at Westfield, Annapolis Mall has done sunset storytimes up on the parking, upper parking level, and I know when that park is built, um, that, that it'll, we definitely will coordinate, and we are, Carol is there. Um, I know Kathy Hollerback would speak to that if she was able to be with us right now, and I know that, uh, Rudy Rodella, uh, has been, uh, coordinating and, and communicating on this as well. Rudy, I don't know if there's anything you would like to say about this.
But I think, uh, Council, Sir Rudy Rodella, Chief of Support Services for the library, I think the councilman's remarks are spot-on. Uh, we're looking, uh, past, uh, past the Millersville Library and into the renovation areas, as, especially as we look to, uh, replace the Mountain Road Library, to really become more involved with, uh, principally the schools and parks in developing new library sites as well. But those are, those are very well, very well-taken remarks, sir.
Do any of my colleagues have other, of Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Old and your team, happy, I don't know, late day on a Tuesday. Um, so, I, 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 you, you sort of hit on something that I was gonna ask you about, which is, uh, you, I know have heard from me and maybe some other colleagues of mine for, about constituents of ours who have been unhappy that the libraries closed, and they've felt like, um, you know, we should look at funding for the library, and we should, um, you know, possibly penalize the library for the fact that the library's been closed during the pandemic. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that and sort of talk about the services that the library has been able to provide during the pandemic and what that's looked like, um, and just sort of give me any response, if you have one, to that question, uh, just because I don't know that it's entirely appropriate for us to do that, and I think that the library did work extremely hard during the pandemic to try to, um, to maintain some semblance of services, but I'm also cognizant that a lot of people who do rely on the library, particularly for things like, you know, internet access and books and stuff like that, did have significant difficulty getting that. So, you know, what, what's kind of the balance there on that? I know that's not an easy question, and, and if you have to kick it and get back to me, that's okay, okay, too. I'm not trying to put you on the spot to freeze you up, but, um, anyway, that's, that's my question.
Well, thank you, Councilman Volkey. No, I, I don't need to kick that at all, and actually, I probably misspoke a little by saying we closed on March thirteenth. What we did was we shifted services, frankly, the very next week, by Monday or Tuesday, March the sixteenth, or whatever that was, we were doing virtual programs. We saw a tremendous expansion of the virtual programs. We also immediately in March, um, began, uh, developing our plan and deploying and added, um, ex- expansion of our Wi-Fi in parking lots, so we made, uh, the, we made Wi-Fi in parking lots a priority and put money into that right away. We bought a number of Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots that we could check out. We already had a program going where we had maybe fifty of those, so we got, uh, I believe we got fif- fifty more of those right away from our foundation, which was able to provide that funding right away. The, we had to invent a, a whole system of quarantining books, which we thankfully have now stopped doing the quarantining because that has proven not to be as much of a critical issue. We had to create that quarantine system, at least for the first s- six months, let's say, and also develop the, the protective equipment that we put inside, develop all the protocols. Our staff just went right to work on reinventing how we would provide those services. I think, though, if I have a major regret of the pandemic, it is that we had to have our library doors closed and only providing the curbside service, not allowing people in the buildings to use computers during so much of it. Obviously, um, you and your colleagues and the, and the county administrations have put in, um, a, a, a good infrastructure of computer access, and that's one of the main services we provide. So that's probably my biggest regret, that we couldn't have that, uh, more of the time. So, a few, a couple of months back, there've been a few times where we have opened and had people in it. The computers have, have been made available, and then, as it is now, we're open up until seven PM on the four weeknights, and until five on Friday, Saturday, and until five on, on Sunday. And half of our libraries unable to provide those computers. I don't know if any of my colleagues on my executive team would like to speak to this, but I would invite, um, one or two of you to speak as well, because I may be leaving something out about the ways that we were open, but in a different way. We were never really closed, um, hundred percent. Anybody?
I'll jump in. This is Christine Feldman, Anarundel County Public Library. Skip's right, when we, um, unfortunately, sort of shut things down on March thirteenth, we never stopped thinking about how we serve our customers, whether it was by phone, whether it was increasing our digital collection, online programs. Serving our customers was first and foremost in our minds. Every single decision we made was about how we could try to provide a level of service that was safe for our customers and for our staff. I, I for one am proud of, of what we've accomplished. We were one of the very first library systems to quote reopen for in-person service. Some are still shuttered for in-person service. So I, I really believe that while we certainly, um, you know, deserve criticism because we couldn't provide everything we have, I am, I am proud with what we've done. You know, we're getting people signed up for vaccines. We're distributing vaccinations at our library systems and food distribution. You know, we are doing more now than we probably have ever done to serve our community.
I, I can just chime in real quick. Kathy Hollerback, Chief of Public Services. In addition to everything that Christine and, um, Skip said, we set up a new service called Live Chat, which is a chat function on our website, and immediately, our customers started asking us hundreds, even thousands of questions every month. Um, and what we tried to do is take each case as it came. So what does this customer need the most? Do they need an appointment that didn't fit into what we had available? Well, can we find them that appointment somewhere else? Do they need to print something out? Okay, can they pick that up at curbside? Do they need to use a Chromebook in the parking lot? Okay, let's see if we can set that up. So we tried really, really hard to get to yes and get everything that we could for the customers, especially the ones who didn't have internet access at home and still needed the libraries. So we tried really, really hard to do that, and I think we, um, had a lot of satisfied customers. Even some of you have gotten some customer complaints, and we followed up with them, and I think in most cases, we were able to help them, maybe not in the usual way we would have before the pandemic, but at least meet their needs as well as we could, given the situation.
Anyone else?
I will just say, oh, I see Ms. Pickard, but, um, M- Mr. Volkey, I, I appreciate you and all of you keeping us honest. We wanna, we wanna do our best by, by you, and we know, we appreciate your funding and, and your keen interest in what we're trying to do, so thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Pickard, D two. I just want to thank the library for their, their hard work as, as one of every county department has had to shift gears in this past year, so thank you for the service you have provided to, to our, uh, constituents. I also am excited to see, uh, as Mr. Ald said, um, the Glenn Burney Library and the Millersville Library make it into the six-year CIP, so, um, as we get closer to that design funding, I think, uh, twenty twenty-four, I'd love to know if there's opportunities for the community to be involved in, in planning, um, for, for that, um, project to get started. Um, so we'll just have to keep talking. Um, but it is exciting. The, the community is really eager to see, see that project kickoff. Um, I wish it was happening this year.
So we definitely will have community engagement and involvement. I would like to ask Mr. Rodella to speak to, to that question. By the way, I realize in this entire presentation and discussion today, I've never identified my position. I'm Chief Executive Officer, um, named as Skip Al, so, for the record. Rudy.
I'm Rudy Rodella, Chief of Support Services for the library. Um, our, our mode of operation, our, our, our way of doing things is that we build libraries for people. So the very, very first conversation we're going to have after we've gotten to know the architects and the architectural team is, we're going out to Glenn Burney, not just the library itself, but to other places within the community to seek out, uh, people's input and invite that, that feedback to. people's input and invite that, that feedback to what kind of library they want to see in their community. That's number one for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I just may. Uh, I'm a big fan of the, the walking tour, so if the library wants to to go on a walk with me and meet some folks and talk to some folks, I'd be happy to be a part of that. There's a lot of history in Glenburne, and there's a strong community and family support. And there's lots to um, lots to take in as we look to design that project. I think uh, I think the Glenburne Library could be even better than the Annapolis Library.
That's our goal. We want, we, we wanna improve on that, and then we'll improve on the Millersville, Millersville from that. I do want to mention that um Cedric Grant and Rudy Rodella and I went to the Keepy Library just maybe three weeks ago and got to meet several folks there. I met um the woman who, she wrote a book about um the prison and parole that uh during the Civil War. But anyway, I've forgotten her name right now, but um we met several folks there. It was a great visit, and we'd love to do a walking tour. And the, I'm sorry, before we get to the other questions, I did need to check with Mr. Pruski about what that Wings Place is. It's Duff's, like where? I'm sorry.
Ca- Councilman Pruski, if, if the chair will let me yield, yes, it's called Duff, D U F F S. It's on Sheridan Drive. It's the, a place that you always see the anchor bars, the original place where Buffalo Wings were invented, but it's called Duff's. I, I highly recommend it. Several presidents, elected officials, even heads of library go there, so I think you should go there.
Okay, well, I, I'll go for a visit just for the atmosphere. I actually follow a vegan diet, so I probably won't have the um, the buffalo wings, but um maybe they have some sort of version I can eat. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I, I was just gonna share. I, I know I had some constituents who were likewise frustrated, but uh, Ms. Hollerback, you, you mentioned the whole getting to yes, and that was um, I will say that when I reached out, uh, Mr. Ald, I reached out to you to, you know, who can I put this gentleman in contact with so that he can get his son some books? Um, a- after a couple of phone calls, I mean, they, they gave, the library system gave him several options of different places he could go, and they worked with him to to get what he needed. So um, I will say I'm, I'm very grateful to the staff for all of their efforts in trying to make that happen for, for that one constituent, and I know that, I mean, they've done it a million times, so um, you know, I just, I would wanted to say I appreciate all that effort.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Hare. Thank you.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Feeder, District Five. Um, I just want to echo the appreciation. I know um, Ms. Hallerback and Mr. Ald, you've not only spoken on the phone with me, but we did a Zoom to address some concerns within the community, and there was a learning curve. Um, you know, uh, we as library goers experienced it ourselves, and you learn through the process how to tackle those challenges. Our avid readers went the first time to curbside and didn't understand that they could communicate with the librarians, and if they needed some more choices, they sh- they should say it. So we went from two books at curbside pickup to carrying in a book pile up to our eyeballs. Um, so appreciate all of the assistance you have provided. I know it has not been an easy year, but you have worked with the constituents and with us, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Feedler.
Anybody else? I'll just add to the chorus, the librarians are superheroes, and all the people who make our great libraries work are superheroes behind them, uh, behind the cakes that we can see. Uh, we greatly appreciate everything you do, and I'm personally thrilled that uh, you know, um, the second year after our first budget, that what you were able to present to us today and the progress in the, the capital plans for two new libraries is all, all very exciting. And uh, I know we all look forward to full, open operation in our libraries again. You know, let there never be a day uh when, when you have to be fully closed for some reason. So uh, Mr. Ald, did you have something else you would like us to?
Yes, I would like to make, to mention two things. One, I, I'd like Ms. Sparrow, who is our new executive director of the foundation, to let everybody know about when we have scheduled the For the Love of the Library event in October, because we would love to have all of you join us for that. It'll be at Bush Annapolis Library.
Uh, good evening and thank you. Kathleen Sparrow, Executive Director of the Library Foundation. Uh, we're very excited that we are going to host an in-person event, um, barring any safety protocols that uh may change over the course of time. Uh, our event is Friday, October twenty-second. It'll be from six-thirty till eight-thirty, and it'll be at the new Bush Annapolis Library. Um, we're hoping to net, uh, and I know this figure off the top of my head because I just got out of a meeting. Uh, we're hoping to net a hundred thousand dollars um that will go directly to library services, and uh I invite all of you to attend and spread the good word about the event, so thank you.
And, and one last thing I just wanted to say. I know we've talked about how great Glenburne and Millersville are going to be, but for right now, Councilwoman Roddian should be um quite pleased that the Bush Annapolis Library is, is one of the best libraries in the United States and.
It's beautiful. Sorry to interrupt, but it's gorgeous. I love it.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Let us not forget Riviera Beach.
Yes, Riviera Beach will open next summer. Thank you. Thank you for that reminder, and uh we try to improve on our past libraries every time, so that, and that's gonna be fantastic. Thank you all so much.
Well, thank you all for the excellent presentation and discussion this afternoon and evening now. Please enjoy a wonderful evening, whether you can go to Duff's or not. Um, is there any other business to be brought before the county council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Roddian, so moved. Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Post hearing none, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until nine AM on Wednesday, May fifth, twenty twenty-one. Please continue to check the county website for important information and updates. Have a good evening.